Good evening. It's five o'clock and I call this session of the work session for city council for the October 12th meeting to order. I will accept a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas.
So good.
Mayor Claffey, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Vice Mayor Darby and thank you, Councilor Woods, which we've done very well so far. Mr. Kestner, can you call it all?
Ms. Edwards.
Hi.
Mr. Arrowwood.
Hi.
Ms. Woods.
Hi.
Mr. Robertson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Hi.
Mayor Claffey.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Brings us to the discussion of bicycle infrastructure design plans for West Beverly Street. Ms. Bogart.
So Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner, will introduce this item and they also have a presentation to show.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey, city council members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. There's actually three exciting infrastructure projects that are about to commence on West Beverly Street and I'm and I'm not referring to anything at 2040 West Beverly Street. The first one is a repaving project of approximately 1.8 miles along West Beverly Street from the city limits to West Frederick Street. This is a V dot primarily a V dot funded project and it will include ADA sidewalk ramp improvements at about a dozen intersections. There's also a HUD CDBG new sidewalk on West Beverly Streets about 600 linear feet from Grubert Avenue to 2207 and West Beverly Street, and this is a HUD funded project. But the third one is what we're going to present tonight is bicycle infrastructure along West Beverly Street. The city is using this repaving opportunity to pursue implementation of the bicycle pedestrian plan. And the city has contracted with the Timmins Group and Thomas Ruff, professional engineer, has been working on the design of this and he will give a presentation at this time. I would note that he provided this similar presentation to the public it's on September 25th and received some positive feedback from the public at that time.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Thomas Ruff with the Timmins Group. So I do live in Charlottesville, so I'll mention that upfront, but happy to be here, happy to work with Timmins Group has worked with the City of Stanton for a number of many, many years. Most almost my entire career. So I'm excited to have the opportunity to talk with you today. And this is I think you know, you know, the project Rodney gave a quick rundown. So this does cover everything from the Western city line along West Beverly Street to Thorn Rose Cemetery in terms of the area where both the repaving and the bike lane project have an overlap. And so based on that, that discussion, I'll kind of jump in here and quick, and this is the same presentation we gave to the public. So I'll note, you know, we have kind of a little bit. I think Rodney looks like he changed the date there. But we've got a quick overview. There's a discussion of the bike and pedestrian plan that the city passed back in 2018. Kind of what the proposed typical section looks like, what it looks like at a couple of sections along ways. I don't have every plan sheet. As you can imagine, and you'll see, we're looking at, you know, aerial view, a planned view of the street section and a lot of the sections are very similar. So I've got a few other examples and we can take any questions that you all have as we get through. So first and foremost, coming from the 2018 bike bicycle plan, this is the red route. So traveling, you know, obviously shows the city limits and continuing a little further to the to the west. And so this section does end at the where Frederick comes in right on the east side of Thorn Rose Cemetery. So that kind of a little bit, do I have a pointer? If not, a little bit, you, you, you all know where the intersection is. So the, that's kind of where the limitations are. There's two different types of there it is. So this intersection is the end. And so there are two different types of improvements we've got and they'll be fully buffered bike lanes, which I'll show up an image of and what that looks like. Essentially a buffered bike lane is something where you actually have some type of extra space between.
I just, and I apologize, but when you said you, you pointed this intersection right there, yet the red line continues to tell me.
This is Frederick and Thorn Rose, and so it's going to go all the way to Frederick and Thorn Rose.
All right. Then what, what was the intersection?
This is Frederick. Where does it continue on to?
Yeah.
So the project starts at Frederick and Beverly and then continues to the Western city line. So I know I'm showing that on the screen. If it's not showing up. So this, the image that's taken on the screen is from the bike plan. I just, it was just something simple to instead of rather recreating that.
That's where 262 begins?
Correct, correct. Yes.
And it comes to Frederick, but it doesn't come the rest of the way down to downtown. There's a little.
Correct. And just to confirm, I think that's where the paving for that section, the paving project with V dot stops at that intersection. So the goal was to, you know, when you, when you do bike lanes or things like this, obviously the repaving gives you a nice, a new canvas to work with rather than, you know, having to eradicate or kind of add that to an existence.
Nice to get rid of all the bumps out there. I'm telling you, it feels like you're on a roller coaster.
No, that, well, that'll be part of the, that's part of the state of good repair project.
So when you talk about buffered lanes against the sharrows lanes, why was that decision made? Is it more efficient to have the buffered lanes where you have that division right there?
Sure. So from a, I'll, there's, there's two answers here. The first is a, from a, from an engineering standpoint or from a safety standpoint, having a buffered bike lane gives every type of bicycle rider more comfort in using the infrastructure. Whereas a shareo is intended to be a share of the road. That's where the terminology comes from. It's intended to tell drivers and bicyclists, you can share the route more. There's more signage, there's more pavement markings, but again, it's just paint. The buffered bike lane gives you that space. I'll say the recommendations that are, that we're implementing are, were made in that 2018 report. So that was a city managed project, I think. And I think Rodney can speak a little bit more to that specifics of why the routes were chosen and what the different recommendations were, but this is more the implementation of those recommendations.
And from Frederick to downtown, that would probably be shared because of roads so narrow.
Correct.
All right. And this may be a tough question and I'm sorry. But do, as an engineer and Lyle, maybe, do you have a study as far as is there a difference or how much difference in possible? You know, accidents with vehicles versus bicycles on a buffered bike lane versus a shareo?
So you're saying in a, in a theoretical sense, which may have more accidents. You know, obviously with mixed traffic of a shareo, you're going to probably likely going to see more interactions. But you're also likely going to see a lot less bicyclists using that part of the route. They will, this section is lucky enough to have enough connecting streets between for many of the residential areas, kind of north and south of Beverly that I believe that most people would, will probably shift to those locations. But yes, the buffered bike lane would provide the most safety. But this is working with the existing infrastructure. So it's no right of way. There's no utility work. Because it's coming with a state of good repair project from V dot and V dot funding, there's no, well, I will maybe say that there's probably a little bit of money from the city. That's, that's a matching fund to that, but it's, so no extra funding to do this project. So that was the, the impetus for implementing it at this time. Thank you. Sure. And this is just a continuation you'll see on the screen of, of the recommendations from that 2018 report. That includes kind of what, what the widths to the travel lanes are. So you'll see, and it will show that in a couple of different places. You know, the roadway being almost 40 feet wide. So obviously that encourages drivers to move at a faster pace. The more pavement they have, the wider the lanes, more likely that you'll see drivers using that, that pavement, using that space to go faster. As I mentioned, pretty, pretty basic, but you know, this is a share of what a typical share would look like. It's intended to show the location of where a bicyclist would be in that shareo operation. So though, you know, but it's also, you know, if a bicyclist is riding in that alignment, you know, hopefully you're giving the drivers the idea that again, you've got to provide the space to allow, to allow those bicyclists to be there. And so anywhere where we have less than, really less than 24 feet of width, or really even up to 30, because there's really no room using the shareo as, as the preferred method.
What would the, the speed through these sections be? Would you lower it to like 20, 25, something like that? Or would it stay pretty much the same? I mean, it's, I think it's 20 right through there anyway, or 15, 25, 25.
I'll note that we, we had that, that was a possibility and obviously, you know, potential recommendation, but I think it came up during the public meeting as well as if this is going to be a bicycle route overall would be to look at that. But as part of this work and the 2018 report, it did not recommend lowering the speeds, but certainly something to consider. And I'm looking at Rodney for anybody that's watching. And so the, the next is, is what this might look like from, and we'll get into the aerial view of this, which will give you a better picture. But the, the buffered bike lanes, you know, again, if you've got 40 feet of pavement, you can see there is, there's a lot of pavement there that can be used for multiple different purposes, whether that's for parking, bike lanes, turning lanes or additional through lanes. In this case, much of the Beverly Street corridor has a two-way left turn lane down the center. And so you'll see on a couple, as we get into some of those sections, that being removed in different sections along the corridor. So you'll see that. And that's usually some stark difference between the before and the after. So we'll start kind of with a basic. And again, I, I don't show every plan sheet or anything like that, but this is at the Western city line and intended to show kind of what those pavement markings would look like on top of the street, starting right there at the city line. And kind of we would have them, they would, those, those share markings and signage would occur roughly every block or every new street along the corridor. And that's again, to continuously educate and tell drivers who's going to be there in these shared land sections. So moving down right into the, where the, the two-way left turn lane begins near Sheet Street. This is kind of the first section where we're taking away the two-way left turn lane and adding the bike buffered bike lane section. You'll see in most areas, we've got about a two-foot buffer and some, some areas it grows. You know, really the, the, there, there is more that could potentially be done in terms of bollards or other pieces. But as part of this project, again, to use the funding that's there is to use pavement and paint, paint, paint markings, thermoplastic paint markings. And you'll see there's, there's breaks for each of the street entrances. We don't see a large amount of a heavy turning traffic here. There are vehicles that do turn. But I think removing the two-way left turn lane is an additive traffic calming measure in that traffic will now have to, you know, wait for someone to turn left. That helps reduce the speeds along the quarter. That's one of the documented benefits of a road diet in this case is that you actually do add kind of that benefit of, of, of reducing speeds along the way. So that's the hope is again, with, with more bicyclists, more bicycle infrastructure and reduce lane widths, reduce speeds from that, that effect, you'll, you'll have a better environment for bicycling on West Beverly Street. This is Mulberry Street, right in front of the Eastern Medical Building. That's actually where we held the public meeting a week and a half ago. And you'll see in this section, it was actually even wider with the additional pavement in front of that, that parking lot. So that's instead of trying to shift the bike lane over, try to keep that in its same alignment as it goes through. But add a right turn lane or a really delineate what that right turn lane looks like. So that's again, the goal is we're not just giving a space for bicyclists. We are trying to give a better signage, pavement markings for drivers heading through the corridor. So the next intersection, and I've got a before and after or existing in the proposed is at Morris Mill and a little bit of the Gruber intersection. So you'll see in the existing configuration, there is a pretty large sweeping movement for that westbound right turn lane onto Morris Mill. And so in coordination with the HUD project that Rodney mentioned that had sidewalk. And I think if you all have the printout, you might be able to see it better, but I think this shows up pretty well, what we are proposing to do in adding sidewalk. This is kind of a missing link of sidewalk between Grubert and the old Tasty Freeze property. So that, you know, provides a safe pedestrian space for pedestrians crossing. We've added in a concrete island to kind of divert traffic. So you cannot make that sweeping right turn. You didn't have to kind of, you have to come to the intersection and make a right, a more, a more constrained right turn to hopefully slow, slow traffic down. And then most of the Gruber intersection has been, remains the same with the left turn lane. The turn lanes are there. Except for the right turn lane into the shopping center, which has been removed and you would make that right turn out of the through lane. So we think looking at just the volumes and what traffic is doing in those locations at that, that's the most appropriate with the traffic signal that's out there today. So that there is a lot going on with this, this one, but I think this is probably the busiest of the, the prop project area. And so coming out of Thorn Rose Cemetery or the section right in front of Thorn Rose Cemetery, we did look at removing parking and having the bicycle lane traveling on both sides of the street. We talked with the public, we reviewed how that section of street is used. So the eastbound section, there will be parking remains and a shareo on the eastbound section. On the westbound side, there'll be the bike lane and no parking. From a safety standpoint, the, the westbound direction heading out of the city is uphill. So we think, you know, that's a good compromise to make sure, you know, uphill, usually if you have, have the choice, the uphill direction, you'd rather have more protection. The bicycle is certainly going to be going slower in an uphill direction rather than downhill. And so that's kind of the recommendation. You'll see as well, a number of different locations, these intersections here that have sidewalk improvements. And that's a separate project, but we do have a couple of intersection ADA accessibility and sidewalk improvements that are a part of this project with the overall V dot state of good repair. Correct. That's correct. Yes.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. I want to make sure that, that I that we are taking into account. And I, I didn't hear everything you said about where the new entrance to the new courthouse is going to be. But you're going to do what there? I mean, we are taking all into account that that entrance into the new court system may be.
Sure. Yes. So the, right now, I mean, I think the, based on leaving the left turn lanes, the configuration that we have, the right turn lane, you know, in general, right turn lane and having those is not, you know, a hundred percent necessary. It doesn't really move. That moves with the normal flow of traffic. So I'd say if you're going to remove a turn lane, removing a right turn lane doesn't impact your operations as much as taking away a left turn lane. So this case, the only change at this intersection is the right turn lane into that property becomes the bike lane.
And I can ask this question if you want to continue your, your presentation, but it basically, I'll just go ahead. I know you've had the public, the public meeting and I thought that was really good, but you know, my concern is that there's so many people in Stanton that have never experienced driving on a roadway with bike lanes. So is there something like some kind of public? You know, public safety campaign or something that, that we can put out there so that it, it helps, it helps their citizens understand what all these, you know, these markings are and what they need to be doing and things like that besides just.
Do other municipalities have signs?
The norm. How do we, how do we do that?
And I may defer to Rodney to make sure that, you know, to give the cities appropriate answer, but I know right now the city doesn't have bike lanes, right? So there, there are, this project would be, you know, introduce those. And there, the entire bike plan, if that were to be implemented, right? That, that's how you move. You, you're starting at zero. You, you, how do you get to 100? You have to start at some location. So this is a good project in that the volumes are appropriate to have bike lanes. It's not a, you know, four lane, 55 mile an hour arterial road. This is a mostly residential access point and can provide bicycle access to the downtown. So this is a good starting point. And the other location that we looked at last year was Churchville Avenue. And so I know that's somewhere in the, in the realm of, of coming up in terms of installing that. So education partly is doing it, but I know certainly we've, we've spoken and.
We have a really, you know, good Weston association that might be able to help with some of that too.
Absolutely. And, and yeah.
I would note in the bike ped plan that city council adopted years ago, one part of that is educational because a component, because that isn't very important. And we've heard that each time we make a presentation about doing something different here that the city hasn't seen before. We heard that when we had the public meeting regarding Churchville bicycle infrastructure and heard again regarding West Beverly Street. So, and some, that's something that bike ped committee has also talked about that there really needs to be an educational component out there for the cyclists and for the, those that are driving the vehicles to understand the changes.
Are there any signs that you know of that are available in other localities that could, you know, we could steal some of their expertise?
We can, we're good at copying what our other jurisdictions do and we can certainly look into that as far as what kind of, you know, educational campaigns they have that have been successful. Of course, there will be signage also associated with this along the road.
Well, I can instantly see somebody seeing it's a shareo and they're going to say, what's that mean? Sharing the road with a bicycle. I can't pass it because that bicycle is entitled to the road as much as I am. And there's going to be a reluctance to, to pass them. And, and as far as I know, it is not illegal to pass a bicycle.
No, sir. And actually state law was changed a couple of years ago to allow vehicles to pass cyclists and other slow moving vehicles with a double yellow line. So if it's, that used to be an issue. It's like, okay, well, I can't pass because it's double yellow line.
Right.
That law has been changed. So it does provide some flexibility on that. The public probably doesn't know that.
That's our point. So yeah, is this, are you going to work with law enforcement to try to figure out some way to get that information out to the city?
We'll do whatever we can.
Waynesboro's had bike lanes for many years at this point too. I haven't paid attention. Honestly, I, I know they, they do have lanes. I mean, they have a lot of wider roads than we do. So I think we've had space for it. So I mean, for us, it's the outer areas that we can actually do official lanes.
Since, since council member Arrow would brought it up, I would note that these will be much nicer than Waynesboro's. I ride in Waynesboro and it's wonderful. However, these will have, for the most part, have a buffered area, a safety zone, two to three feet wide beyond the bicycle lane. I haven't seen any of those in Waynesboro. It's just a bicycle lane and then the travel lane. So they're side by side. So this is an improvement over what I've seen over there.
So this is something more like Charlottesville, because I know Charlottesville has a spot divider between the vehicle and the bicycle. So a small dividing.
Charlottesville has a lot of stuff as far as bicycle infrastructure, including some, I think, physical barriers too. But this would not be a physical barrier. We did hear that at the, at the meeting on West Beverly Street that they would like to see more than this. They would like to see something, you know, some of those rubber delineators or something that would be a more physical barrier and more of a visual barrier. But this is just a repaving project and we're taking this option, opportunity to implement the bicycle infrastructure this time. If we want to come back at a later date and add to it, we certainly could, but.
I have a call coming in from the mayor of Waynesboro. You want to handle?
Just a quick comment. In my experience, because there are bike clubs that, that cycle run, and you probably do on Thursday evenings. If you're ever going up Churchville Avenue on a Thursday evening, the bike clubs are always going up there. There's a woman I know that bikes up Churchville Avenue all the time. And so Churchville is already a really busy bike, bike street and folks just figured it out. I mean, folks slow down, wait to pass and, and everybody seems to, to, to ride, drive safely. But I can see how it might throw somebody off who's driving and, and not want to hurt somebody, but yeah.
Oh yeah, definitely. Most people, most bike bikers ride and reflect, have reflective gear on their bikes and their clothes.
It's going to work.
Very good. It's a positive move forward.
I think it's going to work. Thomas, are you about done?
I don't think, I think it was all just the next.
It is a positive move forward.
Yeah, I'll say, and Rodney and I talked about one way, one positive thing that we've seen in other areas is that when these are opened and hopefully they are open soon. You know, you do get a community like kind of bike ride day, set something up, get everybody to start on one end, a big group. Something that you can get a lot of pictures of actually, you know, people from the neighborhood, get them out there on the road, do it with everyone. So everyone feels very safe, more comfortable with it on that day. One, and also gives everybody a chance to talk about it more, more recognition. We've seen that be very helpful and just trying to really push it rather than just a photo of it or say, hey, they're open is, is do kind of a grand opening. Especially if you are looking to do more of these in the future, the more, the more you talk about it, the more you have it. You know, it's, it's just kind of keep scratching, yet you keep going until that's part of the education process is people seeing it more. So I know that's not the hundred percent answer, but.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Thank you.
No, but it's great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and we're glad to see that we're doing something efficient. Not only are we paving the roads, we're putting bike lanes down simultaneously as, as opposed to having to go back a second time. So it's excellent. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add two real quick comments. One is I like to thank the engineering division for bringing this to our attention. When they found out they have this money to repave the West Beverly, they came to me. It's like, okay, what is the bike plan called for? Cause this is the time to do it. So I really appreciate Lyle and his department. Bringing this to my attention. And as far as educational and doing group rides to educate the public, I, I worked in a jurisdiction where the mayor led a ride every year. Got a lot of publicity when the mayor gets out there on a bicycle.
I want to try one of those electric. I think they look pretty neat. Thank you very much. That brings us to item three on the agenda, which is a review of the existing goals and objectives. The entrance corridors in the city of Stan, Virginia, a comprehensive plan 2018 to 2040 and an overview of future steps to address the entrance corridor overlay district. Ms. Bogart.
Rodney Rose is going to walk through this one as well.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. As I'm sure council will remember back in July, late July, Fraser and Associates presented the final draft of the entrance corridor overlay district design guidelines. During that presentation, the Frasers noted, made some recommendations on future steps the city should take to address the entrance quarter overlay district. Because just updating rewriting the entrance corridor guideline. just updating rewriting the entrance corridor guidelines is just one part of the, of addressing the entrance corridors. Um, and before we can undertake a rewrite of the zoning ordinance regarding the entrance corridors, we need to make sure that the city still supports the goals and objectives for the entrance corridors as stated in the city's comprehensive plan. And I, I listed those in the staff briefing to council and I will go through those real quickly, just so we all know what the comprehensive plan says for these entrance quarters and make sure that council still supports these. And one is to encourage appropriate new development that is well planned, compatible, incorporates mixed uses when, when appropriate and contributes to the resource base of the city. Uh, coordinate planning on corridors to promote quality of life and architectural character. Encourage appropriate landscaping, architectural design, signage, view sheds, considerations, and buffers along major thoroughfares. Enhance the physical attractiveness, attractiveness of the city through signage, landscaping, intrigue plannings, controlling litter and reducing light pollution. Encourage commercial retail structures that join residential neighborhoods to utilize consistent or complementary facades and site features. And to expand the streetscape planning to include entry corridors immediately adjacent to and leading into the downtown historic districts. I would note that upon confirmation, the city council still continues to support these goals and objectives. Staff will undertake a review and update to zoning ordinance, in particular, the entrance quarter overlay district chapter, um, to ensure that the, the ordinance reflects the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I would note that this may be done in conjunction with the cons, uh, paid consultant. And some of the items that would need to be addressed during the zoning ordinance update would be to combine and update existing and proposed entrance corridor standards. Uh, you may remember that when Fraser gave their presentation, you know, he reduced that, the guidelines from 400 and some pages to 40. A lot of it's just redundant. However, there was also some standards, some requirements that were in the guidelines and that was the, as he stated, was the wrong place for them. They need to be in the ordinance. If it's a requirement, it needs to be in ordinance, not in a guideline. Um, so we, um, and actually he's done analysis, the Fraser did analysis as far as what those standards were in the guidelines and what we have in our ordinance. And we need to go through them and see, okay, which ones do we want to keep? Which ones do we want to remove? Which ones do we want to modify? And then we incorporate those standards that support the goals and objectives. Also, um, we need to investigate the potential removal of arterial streets and highways from entrance corridor zoning chapter that do not meet the state code requirement. The state code says that entrance corridors shall lead into a historic district. Um, we have three entrance corridors right now that do not lead directly into an entrance corridor. They are Frontier, Statler Boulevard and Route 262. So we do not believe they meet the state code requirement. So we may need to talk to the city attorney about removing that from the ordinance and they would no longer, um, need to comply with that chapter.
That'd be great.
That's something that came out of, um, the review and the updated guidelines. Um, also develop more consistent boundaries for the entrance corridors. Currently, properties that are joined, um, one of these corridors are in the entrance corridor. It doesn't matter how big they are or how small they are. Um, so we have some very odd shaped corridors. Some lots may only be a hundred feet deep. The lot directly behind them is not in the entrance corridor and not subject to these regulations. However, uh, property that abuts the street and goes back a thousand feet, the entire parcel is in the entrance corridor. So that's something that we think needs to be addressed. Um, to have some sort of more uniform, um, boundaries for the corridors.
You mean just like choose a depth, like 300 feet in or something like that?
I, I've seen some jurisdictions that did that, a 300 foot, 500 foot. Um, here's a little bit different because of topography. Uh, we may need to get, uh, maybe a little bit more complicated than just a straight distance. Um, but yes, that is something we need to look into.
I was just going to ask, do you have an example of, of that? That you just talked about that, is it here in the city?
As far as?
An example of the 300 foot versus the thousand foot.
Example in the city. Um, I'm not, I don't have an example of that. I, I've worked in a jurisdiction where we had a set distance back, but that was in Tidewater, Virginia, where everything's relatively flat. Um, and something 500 feet back, you really couldn't see it from, from the street. Here, depending on the topography, you most certainly could. So we may need to take that into consideration when we come up with some, uh, mapping of the, the corridors. But it needs to be something that's logical. Um, and that's just something that we need to, to look into. I, I don't have an answer for it at this time.
Well, yeah, and Rodney, wow.
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, when you're getting into that, I mean, I, I know you want to do, you want, okay, you can see it up there on the hill. I think it needs to be consistent. Consistency to me is, is foremost. If you can see it, tough. I mean, if, if a piece of property has 300 feet back, you say you're sitting the guideline, the gold line there, and then somebody next to him doesn't have that problem, but he says, well, what about my neighbor? It needs to be consistent.
Well, what about like, I was thinking that one property that came up when we were looking for the courthouse was the land behind food line. Now it's got a very narrow entrance, but it's a mountain. Yeah, it's a mountain back there. You know, you can't do nothing about that. I mean, that's just, you know, I mean, just requiring them to the little area that, that maybe goes up into the area. But, but if you go back 300 feet or 500 feet, it can make that land where they couldn't use it for anything.
Yeah. So I, undercurrent guidelines, panhandle lot like that would all fit into the corridor overlays?
If it has frontage on the street, yes, it would. I, I don't know that property, but if it has frontage, um, on the street, then it would be included. Yeah. I, I envision what would come up with would show a much, whatever, you know, rationale we came up with, it'd be a much smaller, um, entrance corridor.
Uh, yeah, I would hope to.
I mean, be fair, um, to, to adjoining property owners.
Well, in order to be fair, I just, I want to point out what everybody got today at their desk, which is the city of Stanton, the West Beverly Street bike lanes. And that picture is taken from the Salvation Army parking lot across the street from Curry's. And you see the Curry's had his auto seals at this time. And I know Raymond complained to me years ago when I was running for this position, that he had an available lot that he had parked his potato chip trucks on for years and had no, uh, stipulations on it. And then he decided he was going to sell some used cars on his lot. As you see, he has it going right there on his lot. And they insisted that he put shrubbery in bushes. And he says, what do you want if you're selling cars? You want visibility. You want people to be able to drive out West Beverly Street and see a car. And here we go along. And in our efforts to install corridor overlays, we block the visibility of his vehicles, which he doesn't have very good visibility coming over that hill anyway. And the business is no longer there. And I'm not blaming it on the shrubbery. I'm just saying it was a, a needless impediment that we put in under the auspices of corridor overlay that was unnecessary and, and eventually aided in the demise of, you know, visibility to the, to what he was trying to sell.
We had the same problem on, uh, Bemil Avenue because hardies in all that area. They didn't want shrubs.
They wanted, they wanted actual, uh, shrubbery put there.
I think maybe that's something you could be able to, as long as you do something that doesn't grow very high or, or even something that can be trimmed up or something like, still I have the greenery, but not the
I, I think actually in the guidelines that the Frasers, um, drafted and presented to council, it, it shows or recommends some low lying shrubs just to define the border, but not to, um, interfere with visibility of what's on the site. So, so that's something we can look at in our ordinance as far as to address that.
Yeah. Cause I know traveling, going to different cities, uh, you can miss places because they have, it's overgrown, the sign is there and you have the shrubs. It looks nice, but then you miss the sign until you get right up on it. And sometimes that causes the accident because you're, you're like right there and then you like, oops, here it is. And somebody behind you rear end you.
And Rodney, didn't you, I mean, didn't you say when you came from Williamsburg that there was some ordinances there that were, I mean, literally on car lots and different things. They had higher shrubbery or peaked shrubbery or something. I remember hearing or something like that. And it, I mean, I mean, it did seem to block businesses. At least that's where it spurred or appeared.
Um, actually, uh, uh, in that jurisdiction, there were some, uh, exceptions for, for car lots.
Okay.
Um, because that, that's what you're selling. That's your product and, and you want visibility for it. So there was exception to the entrance corridor rules on that.
Then that's something we could be able to add, I would think.
Well, I don't know what kind of shrubs you guys have, but I, you know, I, um, in my yard, I'm more likely to trip over them than, than have site blocked by them. So I mean, as long as we're talking something, you know, like juniper, like not a, a boxwood maze, uh, more of a, a low, uh, juniper type thing that just gives, because we're also talking about permeable area. Cause in the West End especially, we see a lot of the design of, of 50s and 60s, which was pave it all. Uh, and then we end up with, you know, creating pathways for water going straight into downtown. And part of this is that.
We already have a lot of this stuff worked out now, uh, in, in the, uh, in, in the overlay, I think.
In the simplification, yes. And that, that I think was what we're trying to stress. The more simplification we have, the better. Anything you can do to eliminate
Yeah, no, I think we all agree. It's common.
Unnecessary or, or things that are going to hurt the business owners. Let's do away with them.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, and I'm probably maybe I'm a hardliner because I, I get upset when they talk about li, I know that people talk about the, that love the, the light pollution, but I mean, when you read the things, okay, it's got to be up at 23.5 degrees, this and that. And bull, I mean, you know, the, yes, we, you want to try to keep it from just blinding people, but putting all these restrictions, I just, when you read them, I just get a little crazy.
We have to understand that we did take a public, we had a public hearing and with Fraser and Associates. And one of the things that was in it that most people wanted was the beautification and all of that. So I think we can't just say
I think we can make it work.
We can leave it the way that people has said, that's what they want. Right.
We can make it simpler. That's
Yeah, we can make mark.
Absolutely. Let's do that. Keep it simple. We'll all be happy.
Try to strike a balance.
Make it look nice in the process.
There we go.
Um, I think the only other things I have on here that, um, come to mind that we would try to address in the, in the update to zoning ordinance is to consider adopting a new review process for development proposals in the entrance corridors. Um, I believe that, uh, the Frasers told me of all the jurisdictions they've worked in, the city of Stanton is the only one that doesn't have a board of something, uh, some sort of board or commission reviewing these proposals and doing it by staff. That's, we're the exception to everyone else in the state that has entrance quarters. So that's something else just to consider.
Would it be a voluntary board or, or would it be one with restrictive powers?
Uh, it would be, uh, I, I'm not sure it would be a new board or existing board, um, that's appointed by city council that would have specific authority to review, you know, development proposals in the entrance corridor.
Cause I mean, I'm afraid of that. I, I'm not in favor of an uncertified citizen board that hasn't been through rigid training standards.
Where, where would this come under now? Is it any board handling this? Would it be under zoning or?
Well, like I said, right now staff is, is handling it and reviewing it. Um,
I mean, I can see if it's voluntary and you want is for guidelines and, and for aesthetic purposes, that's great. I mean, it would be like, they, they could help pick the, uh, Mr. Johnson's, uh, lighting, uh, parameters that, you know, that, that's fine for the input, but boy, I don't want to give a, uh, a border commission authoritarian, uh, rights to go out and, you know, say, you've got to have bushes here and you're allowed to have shrubs. Not that I, and I'm aware of the difference, but I'm just saying that becomes arbitrary. And I would rather have any enforcement come from the city side as opposed to a, a volunteer border commission.
Other jurisdictions, how, how is that handled with that half these boards? Or do, do they just give recommendations and it comes to?
No, they, they have the authority to approve or deny a request. Um, similar to your historic preservation commission here, um, for the, in the historic district, you know, approving, uh, certificates of appropriateness. Um, you would have a board, a commission that would approve the development proposal, whatever it may be, um, based on their review of the guidelines.
Yeah, they have got. Mr. Blair, did you have a comment?
Um, just to the question about what do other jurisdictions do? Um, I know, I just wanted to say, I know Charlottesville, the planning commission, they, they take, they say they always, we take our one hat off and put on the other, and therefore they will adjourn their meeting as the planning commission and then reconvene. The planning commission also serves as the entrance corridor, uh, review body. So that's just one option you, I just wanted to, to help answer the question. That's one option that I've seen.
All right. Well, we'll take such thing under advisement.
Okay. Um, I, I would note that, um, yeah, once we work all these details out, then we would need to adopt, um, these revisions to zoning ordinance and at that time adopt the, the guidelines that the Frasers prepared. So this is what needs to happen before we, um, go to public hearings and, and approve those, um, changes. Uh, I would note that, um, at Plan Commission September 21, 2023 meeting, uh, the commission indicated its support of the comprehensive plans, existing goals and objectives for the entrance corridors. And the commission noted that a more thorough review of the goals and objectives could be undertaken when the comprehensive plan is updated in 2024. However, they were generally supportive of existing goals and objectives and a root review and update to the zoning ordinance should not be delayed.
All members of council in favor of that? You know?
Yeah.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thanks for your
Thank you, Rodney. All right. Bringing us to our next item, which is an update on juvenile domestic relations court facility West End project. Ms. Bogart.
Okay. So, uh, we have another update for you. We've got some things to share. We're at a point where we can do that. Uh, we have a PowerPoint. So we have some visuals to share with you at this point and Jeff Johnston will kick that off for us.
Welcome.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to vamp a bit, give Kylie some time to get the, the screen down, uh, and the slides up. Um, so great weather we're having. Uh, chamber conference day here in Stanton, 70 degrees, not a cloud in the sky.
As a reservoir.
Well, Leslie will talk about that later and I don't want, so no spoilers.
Steal my thunder. I don't care.
All right. Um, uh, this is I guess the second and what I have no doubt will be a long line of updates, uh, as we go through this, uh, this, uh, process. Uh, talk a little bit about the schedule, uh, this, uh, where we are with the schematic design and then some of the next steps. Very excited to get to this next slide. Is there a checkmarks on it? We've actually started to clear hurdles. Um, and at, at this point, I probably need to stop and give some very significant thank yous to the people who help us get those checkmarks in place. Um, if you remember, uh, we kind of started from a dead stop in July on a site that we didn't even own officially until August. Uh, and I'm standing here in October, having, uh, gotten a schematic design approved by the Commonwealth so that we can proceed to our next hurdle. And that is due in no small part to a very large team. Uh, I'll start with the good folks at Mosley Architects. Uh, again, uh, could not be happier with the decision we made to bring them on board. Uh, their skill, their dedication, and then just flat out neck down work, uh, has been amazing. Uh, their skill, their dedication, and then just flat out neck down work, uh, has been amazing. Uh, paired with that is their understanding of the Commonwealth, what they're looking for, uh, and and the the pitfalls that, uh, we could have very easily wandered into that would have cost us time that we didn't have. Uh, here in Stanton, uh, everyone involved with the, uh, J and D R system, the judges, the clerk and their staff, uh, the court services unit, sheriff, lots of meetings, uh, lots of time, lots of questions, uh, and and really put them on the spot for some answers. Again, I'll remind everyone that we've never run a standalone J and D R court before. Uh, so, uh, uh, there is a lot of, uh, you know, prognostication that needs to be done by the folks who know this business, and that's certainly not myself. And then internally to the team, Lyle and his folks over in engineering, Lyle does all the, he carries a lot of the water on this, uh, and and moving the documents around, uh, getting, uh, questions moved to the people who can answer them back and forth. It's been, uh, an amazing team. And I'd be remiss if I also didn't give some thank you to the folks in Richmond, uh, the attorney general's representative, their architects. They did not cut us any slack, nor did we seek any slack to be cut. But they were mindful of the timeline that we were following. And they were very accommodating in responding to our questions and, uh, in in helping move it along. Uh, so with all that said, uh, we have got an approved schematic design. And this is what it looks like. So this is, uh, again, a schematic design. It's not a, it's not a full design. Uh, the colors indicate sort of who's who in the zoo. Uh, this is the first floor, uh, in the pink is the courtroom. Again, the, uh, front door in the middle, that's exactly the way the sheriff wants it set up to get folks into and through the metal detector and into the lobby. Uh, it's where he wants the waiting rooms to keep the, uh, keep, give everybody a place to wait, uh, separate if need be from other folks who are waiting. Uh, and the courtroom is to the judge's specifications. Uh, the area to the, uh, left is for the clerk and their staff. It's got their document storage rooms, their document review rooms, their counters, uh, everything they need. And then the space in green is for the sheriff. And on the first floor, that is all the business of getting detained people into the building, getting them into holding cells and preparing them to get into court. Uh, you'll see some yellow spaces that are shared spaces. That's something that, uh, Mosley came up with and that we, uh, were able to explain to the Commonwealth. There are folks who don't necessarily need a full-time office, but nonetheless need a place to sort of work, Blue Ridge Court Services and other folks. Uh, and as opposed to giving them offices that would sit empty large amounts of the time, we created a shared space that the clerk and the sheriff can shuffle amongst all the various people who need it. Um, so it's a place where when they're in that building, they can work in that building. But it's not the kind of place that's gonna have a desk with a picture of their wife and kids on it. Um, and it maximizes the the use of that space. Now, let's talk a little bit about the actual layout here. You'll notice that the sheriff is tucked away over on the side. That is by design. Uh, that is the key function that creates what we call the expendability, the phase two expendability. So additional courtrooms placed to the right of that could share that same, those same Sally ports, those same holding cells uh, and achieve economies of scale, uh, that would make future additions more cost effective. So there is some square footage in this building that is there to facilitate additional, uh, buildings down the road. Uh, and yes.
I'm just wondering, well, there's, there's gonna be enough space on that side to build what we need.
Yeah, well, yes.
That will be tearing down like the big lots building or something like that or?
Potentially, potentially, we'll talk about when we start talking about the lot in, you know, writ large.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern is that that we didn't center it enough to where we would have the ability to add on to it.
Now, stay with the rest of the class there, counselor homes.
A little slow.
It's it's, we'll get, I'm gonna get to that slide. Um, upstairs, uh, it's a, it's, uh, very similar. And upstairs, uh, is the sheriff's office spaces, uh, in addition to the upstairs holding cells. The upstairs courtroom is smaller, uh, than the downstairs courtroom. Um, and then, and in the, uh, over on the left, that is now the court service units, uh, spaces for their parole officers, uh, their staff, it's got their bathrooms, it's got the drug test bathroom, all the things, uh, that that they need. Again, some more shared space. Both the judges' chambers are tucked away in the back corner, uh, which is where the sheriff wanted them, uh, provides, uh, best security posture. Again, uh, we did get some input from the Commonwealth, but all of it was, uh, quite frankly, good advice, and none of it was particularly expensive to incorporate. But this is the approved schematic. Uh, this is everything that they want us to be, that we need to build. And I'm, again, I could not be happier that we got here as quickly as we did. Yes, sir.
Good. I mean, just looking at this, it, and maybe the sheriff would have to answer that, but his first floor, are they dedicated, one being juvenile on the first or the second and domestic relations, vice versa, or they could flip easily?
Chris, come to the mic, please.
So the way it's designed, both top and bottom, it gives us the flexibility to meet our our state requirements to house juveniles on one area, sight, sound, barrier away from the adults. If we're, and one of the examples that we discussed was if we have that problem inmate, be it adult or juvenile, and we're not using the second floor courtroom at that point, we could isolate that inmate away from from the actual court operations. So we have some flexibility built in there.
Thank you. And there's only, is there only one courtroom, Chris? I mean, major courtroom on each floor, but can you have smaller courtrooms?
No, no, two courtrooms.
Just that's it. Okay.
Two courtrooms.
Quick question, what is the gray? What does support MEP mean?
Uh, mechanical rooms, uh, server rooms, uh, the elevator rooms, it's all, that's, that's the equipment space.
Equipment.
Equipment space. So we talked a little bit about the sort of the site writ large. So here's the site plan, and you'll note that we have absolutely tucked that as far into the corner as we can. So the the necessary secure, uh, traffic and parking areas are tucked right up against the corner of the property line. We, uh, you know, we are trying to maximize the footprint on that property. All right, that was a big swing for Stanton. We wanna make sure that we get as much out of that parcel as we can. And I know this, uh, to kinda help, uh, visualize, there's the outline of the current building, sort of give you a, uh,
The current hex.
The current hex building, to give you a sort of a, uh, representation where we're going. So, yes.
So this part over here would be the entrance.
So the entrance would be to the left, come, so Be- Beverly Street is to the left on this, on this, on this diagram. And I think, uh, that the, uh, to the no, to the top of that is, uh, Armentraut Street, which is a paper street that runs through there. And then the houses, the houses behind that are addressed off of Beverly Court. But again, we have, we did, we went and we dialed it as far into the corner as we could to maximize the available footprint for future expansion.
That Armentraut Street you're talking about, is that what runs alongside of, um, Hertz TV?
Believe so. It's an alley. I mean, it's, it's not an official alley.
No, I don't think that's, that's not, the one that runs by Hertz is 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 actual street.
Actual street, street.
Yeah. Is this the other one behind it by Stellamere?
There's an alley in there.
I thought it was like, the alley goes beside of Hertz between Hertz and the property, the parking lot. But then I thought Armentraut was at the back end, like up against that hill.
So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I I again, I, it's a paper street, so it's not really an alley or anything. It's just, it's just unused right of way. Uh, that's, uh,
There's no, there's no thought of tying into a different road back there.
No need. There's no, there's, there's no pressing need. We can meet all of our secure traffic flow with the existing asphalt. No need to make anymore.
But is the city still responsible for that area or is it the individual landowners?
Again, the 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 paper street issue is a, is a separate issue. It doesn't belong to anybody, uh, doesn't belong to any private landowners, nor does it belong to the city. So, uh, so it's kind of an interesting question when those pop up. Um, we did, uh, the last time I was up here, I sh- I showed some elevations. Those have been modified. This is the new, uh, version. You'll note that it has significantly less glass and significantly more brick and concrete. Uh, that is for two reasons. Number one, because, uh, it helps tie into the overwhelming, uh, mid-century modern architectural, uh, landscape that you find in the West End. Uh, and number two, because public works director was not in the mood to clean all that glass. Uh, so I ask if we could maybe tighten that up a little bit. Again, still very, uh, uh, attractive building, uh, but not quite as modern in its appearance and a slightly better maintenance, uh, posture with that.
Been, uh, given much thought to solar on this building?
We have, we absolutely have. Um, and so the building will be, uh, equipped for solar. We'll make sure that the the conduits and wires are there. The actual photovoltaic cells will probably be a bid option to the contract. Um, because that is not a requirement of the court order. So I wanna make sure that the base contract satisfies what we have, what we told the Commonwealth would do. We'll get a price for it. If the price is right, we can do it. If not, we can come back and do it later. But we'll certainly make sure that the building is solar ready. And if, uh, if the opportunity is there, we may, we may build it with solar. If not, we'll come back and put solar on.
I have a question. If you go back to the schematic design of the second floor for the courtroom, the the smaller ancillary courtroom, is the the ceiling height and where the benches and all that kinda stuff?
The only difference between the two courtrooms is the, is the footprint size.
Okay.
Everything else, uh, will be the same. It's, and actually, the actual court space is the same, has a smaller gallery in the upstairs courtroom than in the downstairs courtroom.
Talked about, uh, parole officers and drug testing. Is that gonna be Blue Ridge Court Service or?
No, that's juvenile court services.
Yeah. So the CSU folks will be handling that.
Yeah, the question, Jeff, I know we had talked about, well, we had, you know, back some months ago about the possibility of there being other uses for that land. And I noticed on this one thing, you were still, you know, it's talked about how the P, the building still just the edge over here.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, like where the registrar, different areas that we.
So let me, uh, let me get to our next steps. Um, this isn't as curious slide as the first one. No checks on this slide yet. Uh, this is more a sobering understanding of, uh, you know, congratulations for clearing hurdle one. Here comes hurdle two. And that is a full developmental design by the twenty-second of November, the Wednesday before, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Um, which means, uh, it is time to really get down to brass tacks on the security plan. Uh, sheriff, uh, has got a number of meetings upcoming as we go through door by door, camera by camera, switch by switch, uh, to make sure it's laid out the way they want it. Uh, Kurt Plowman, uh, will be talking about the IT plan, make sure that, uh, the servers, the connections, not just the ones we need now, but the ones that we can foresee will need in the future, uh, are laid in. Right? We only have one chance to get into these walls and get that, and get that stuff pulled, and Kurt's gonna make sure you get that right. Uh, and then the site plan. Uh, so just because it's the city that's building, it doesn't mean that we don't have to meet the same site plan requirements as any other, uh, any other project in the city. Uh, so we need to run that through, uh, the internal staff, uh, water, sewer, stormwater, these are all issues that we're gonna have to clear, just like anyone else does. We don't get, uh, any special breaks. The only difference is, yeah, we got a hard, hard date that we have to meet. So a lot of work coming up. Um, it's also time to start thinking about, do we wanna do a separate demolition contract? Or do we want to just include demolition in the construction contract? Uh, pros and cons, obviously, it gives us an opportunity to kinda get, get a head start, do the demo while we're finishing construction. Uh, the downside is now that's two contracts that we are now gonna have to deconflict. Whereas if we do it under one contract, that risk moves to the contractor. I was out there today, uh, with a structural engineer from Mosley talking about that, and we'll have that, we'll be coming up with that, uh, recommendation, uh, here soon. And then there's the overall site master plan. We've had the initial meeting. Uh, Mosley is gathering information on the, on the, on the possible uses that we put in front of them. They're sending their folks out to look at the, the building we're keeping to get a feel for what kinda shape it's in, what it would take, uh, to convert it, and they're gonna come back to us with some options. Uh, and we'll start through that process. Having said that, we are absolutely gonna put a new roof on that building, uh, if no other reason to just protect our investment. Uh, and so that contract should be on the street relatively quickly. Uh, we'll come in and just get a hot tar roof on there, get it watertight again, so that it preserves whatever, uh, values there and make sure that whatever use is there doesn't degrade as we sort out what was, what's going on.
How many square feet is the new building?
How many square feet in the new building? Wow, I would. Lyle's, Lyle is rif- rifling through his papers right now. I think it's, is it twenty-two and some change? Is that what I wanna? Yeah.
We at one point said it had to be at least eighteen.
Eighteen was the, eighteen was the bare bones, uh, requirements. Um, like I said, we, is there some additional square footage in there that represents two things? One, a better understanding now, it was almost eighteen months ago when we first put that together, better understanding now what it's gonna take to operate an independent court. Uh, and also, uh, that ability to extend, uh, that ability to grow out of one side of the facility.
Because, I mean, we talked about that we need a a space and a court that could grow for the next forty to fifty years.
That's the plan.
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, so when you talk about Mosley's gonna come back and and give more information about the two things that you mentioned just a second ago. Are they gonna, is, are they gonna come back and give that information to us? Are you gonna relay that information to us? How are we gonna get that?
Uh, we'll, we'll, we we will take the first cut at it.
Okay.
Uh, and then we'll bring it, then again, there, there are some things that just may or may not work for us that may make sense on a sheet of paper that don't make sense in the real world. So we'll take a first cut at it. But again, it's a master plan, uh, so there'll be a lot of talking about it before there's anything really done about it. Again, the only thing I can say right now is that it's definitely getting a roof. It's absolutely, absolutely getting a new roof.
And the master plan is for what? Just the juvenile court or for the whole?
The whole site.
So, uh, the complex.
Whole complex, all the way down to, all the way down to Beverly Street.
Gotcha.
And how many square feet are in the old X building?
Yeah, the old hex, I think, is forty-two thousand, and I think the other building, the the sort of longitudinal building there is about forty-five thousand all told.
Oh, including all of it.
Including all of it, all four of the storefronts.
Is there any benefit if if there's, if there's the paper street and I'm, I haven't spent time further into that lot there. If there's a paper street there, is there any benefit considering turning it into a real street and being able to move it over a little bit more?
I I can't, I I can't see any, creating a, creating it as a real street does not create any more developable lots. It doesn't create any additional traffic, uh, plans. It's just that much more asphalt that I gotta babysit. So it really doesn't add a whole lot to.
It wouldn't enable to move over somewhere. I I just don't know.
No, there's a, again, it, remember, it's, it's the public right of way. We, we can't build in the public right of way necessarily anymore than anybody else can.
Okay. Where's the secure parking for the judges and staff?
Okay, so if we go here, uh, the lot that's sort of tucked in between the Sallyport and the actual court building is the, is for the judges and the court staff. And then the lot behind that and sort of down, uh, below the building is for other staff, the sheriff and other vehicles. So.
Will that parking for the judges be underground or?
No, it will not, it will not.
Jeff, I'm sorry, can you
Yes.
Point where exactly you saw him at? In the, where?
See where it said, see where the current, see where the current building arrow is pointing?
Right.
That parking lot is for the judges.
Oh, this, oh, okay.
So they will enter, they will enter, that, so they will go through a lift gate to get into that secure parking. They'll enter the building. There'll be their own elevator that will take them upstairs if they need to go upstairs. Along with sta- they'll also have stairs. Along with sta, they'll also have stairs if they want to use stairs.
Okay.
And that puts them, uh, into a secure space. It allows them to circulate from their car to their chambers, to the courtroom and back without encountering anyone they don't want to encounter.
And Jeff, you, you had said that the, uh, the sheriff's facilities are pressed to the right side of the building. So another building could be added on, on that side.
On this, on this diagram, the, the area on the bottom side of the building.
Yeah.
On both floors is where the sheriff spaces are. So if another building is added next to it, they could access both sides from that central core.
And that would press the parking to in front of the building?
We would have to, we would have to accommodate the additional, uh, parking. That would be a phase two, that would be a phase two consideration.
Yeah, of course, the water and sewer come in, going to come into this property.
Right now, water, uh.
Cause it probably runs right up under the street where you enter. It's light, it doesn't it?
Yeah, it, yes, it comes in there. There's also a sewer line that's coming down the hill from the neighborhood above that works its way through the parking lot. That'll all.
All be new stuff going in, but could you bring it out on the other side?
So you wouldn't. And we'll have to, we, we, we don't want to relocate sewer line unless we have to, but we also don't want to build a building on top of a sewer line. So we will do what we have to do to keep all of our utility lines out from underneath the building.
I just worried about having that area so tore up that affects the little pizza place.
Right, I, again, I, I, we share that same concern. We meet with, uh, the folks, uh, at Stella Mia, uh, on a regular basis to keep them up to speed. But at the end of the day, we got to build it.
Right.
So, uh, we will minimize, we will minimize that impact. But it's going to be a construction site. And, uh, I'm not sure we can take that down to zero.
Any last questions? We're running. Everybody good to go? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the update.
Everybody that was involved, truly, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. And now it is six o'clock. Know it is. Discussion of the proposed council procedure memorandum, number 21, natural disaster fund. Ms. Berger.
John Blair is going to walk through this item.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey and Council. Before you, at the, uh, at your first set meeting in September, there had been a proposal from Counselor Robertson to donate a thousand dollars to the victims of the wildfire in Hawaii. During that meeting, he did in fact withdraw that specific request. But during the discussion about that item, the mayor asked me and, and it, with some of council of you nodding your head, perhaps, uh, craft a policy that you could consider in which there would be a natural disaster fund in the future in case council wished to make a donation to victims of a natural disaster. Before you, you will see a proposed council procedural memorandum, number 21. It's a very simple policy in effect. It would require the city manager each year before she prepares the budget to talk to the council and see if there's a desire that year to have a natural disaster fund. If a majority of council wanted such a fund, then she would look at, again, as with all budgetary items, uh, revenues, expenses, and propose a number in her annual budget. And council, as you do with any budget line item, could amend that number up or down, however you wish. But then you would have an amount appropriated that year so that if a natural disaster occurred, uh, the council could allocate money out of that fund to go to a nonprofit serving that serves the city of Stanton, but that would also be serving the victims of that natural disaster. You will see, I, I did take out of the state code of Virginia, the definition of natural disaster. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, this is just presented for discussion at your request.
Council, council members, we have any questions?
So I see that you have put at the beginning of every budget cycle, if we go ahead and, uh, vote for this to go in, that means we don't even have to do it at all if we choose not to.
Absolutely, you could, I mean, again, the, the policy is drafted. So the city manager would come to the seven of you. And if a majority said you want this, she would include it in the budget. And, and she would make a determination on the, the funding after talking to you and looking at revenues and expenditures. But if a majority of you said, as she began to prepare the budget, we don't want it, she wouldn't include it in her budget.
So that would be in the November, December timeframe? You would find out if members are.
I mean, probably not even that early, probably more towards, we're finalizing the budget in January, February.
So if we did appropriate funds to that and nothing happened during the course of the year, we would, those funds go, would it stay there or we can put it back?
Usually they would go back to the general fund. I mean, we could add the, the appropriation that we would carry over, but you would have to explicitly state that in the budget ordinance.
Right, right. That was my question, where do those funds go? If not, just leave them there for the next cycle.
And you would just have to, we would have to write that up in the budget ordinance if that would happen.
I would, I would suggest it goes back into the fund.
If, if. I would, I'd much rather that we, we use that money here in our area. I don't, I don't, I, I, I know when a natural disaster happens everywhere, it's, it's, it's really hard and it, you know, but I think because this is not our money, but it is the citizens' money. I think that that money should stay in our jurisdiction as far as helping people that need the help here.
This does not specify that it has to go elsewhere.
It doesn't say that.
It just specifies any disaster.
It does seem to be set up.
Right.
To be used as a reaction to a, to a disaster happening anywhere in the country. That, that sort of feels like, were you about to say something?
I was, but finish up.
Okay, I, I, I agree with Terry on this. It makes me uncomfortable to set up something that's designed for us to react. And I know in market.
It's a great idea.
It came from a good place on it. I, I just personally, I feel that we should, yeah. This, no matter how we, we put it, this is tax money. You know, whether we set it aside in a separate fund on that. I, I feel that we are charged to spend taxpayer money for the city of Stanton. Now, I would be, you know, if I felt very strongly about a particular cause or, or a disaster, I would, I would say I, I would set up a GoFundMe. I would do a, you know, donate on my campaign Facebook page, uh, you know, if you feel strongly about that, which would give the citizens of Stanton a choice to spend their money on it. But I think the citizens of Stanton have a reasonable expectation that we're going to be using the tax money that we generate on Stanton projects. That, that's my feeling on it. Now, if, if any one of us wants to donate part of our stipend for it, and I know Mark, you have in the past.
Yeah.
You know, done that.
And I appreciate.
Yeah, and you donated a habitat while we were there, which is very appreciated. I think that's our own use because it's no longer taxpayer money it is given to us. But I, I, I just feel that we should be using taxpayer money for the city of Stanton. And beyond that, it should be specific choices for them.
And just to add to what Brad has already said, um, and I appreciate very much that you made that contribution on behalf of the citizens, um, because it, you know, we all have this, this compulsion to do that. But I, I feel like the restrictions are so great that it has to be given to a nonprofit that is, exists in Stanton and that, you know, would be able to give to blah, blah, blah. I just think it's an impractical way of, of giving our money, um, that may not have the greatest impact. So I'm, I'm going to agree with Brad and Terry on this. And, um, and I think it is good to use our leadership as, as folks have to bring these things to light.
Yeah, council is a great soapbox for directing attention to worthy causes.
Or if, for example, we were asked by a locality of, you know, someone nearby Augusta County that experiences something awful or Lexington, perhaps we could consider those on a case by case. But this is conjecture.
It's conjecture, but, but I think here's an important part. If something was to happen in Augusta County and we had passed this memorandum 21 and we had the vehicle in place.
Right.
And, and something came up in Augusta County, you would have the ability to tap. Whereas if we don't do this, we do not have it in the budget, we can't touch it. So, so, so from that standpoint, it would be, now, maybe we want to put in this memorandum that we're going to restrict it to local. I mean.
In that case.
City, city or, or our Stanley Augusta Waynesboro area?
Do, but do we already have, do we, and I, I asked truly, do we already have a mechanism for emergency?
I don't know.
Like in the flood, what happened?
We did not give direct donations. We don't, we did not have a mechanism to do that. And there were other agencies that more, could more quickly respond in that way at that time. So to get a quick response, such as the community foundation, they had a direct process to make, to have people be assisted with that. We gave other types of assistance like sandbags, like extra pickups. The list went on and on. We did a much more comprehensive approach rather than just giving dollars to nonprofits or individuals. So, uh, we just did not have the mechanism in place. And it may not have been the best use of our money and time, given that we had these other agencies that could actually, we could partner with to do that part of it. And they're already built for that.
But I suppose it's, you know, in, in the instance of a truly local emergency, something county Waynesboro, something like that, we already have cooperation agreements for fire and.
Correct, yeah, they're going to send, we're going to send assistance and they're going to send assistance no matter what.
Yeah.
This will not, this does not speak to that at all. That will always happen.
And, you know, in the case of the flood, the community foundation did manage that fund. And that is what they do.
That's what they do. So we would look to others, so we figured they're the experts. We are going to go to who the experts are to help do that. We're not the experts in managing donations or being a bank, so to speak, or, um, so we're just not experts at that. And if we have other groups that can do that, then so be it. Now, we do give to outside agencies, there's a list in the budget. So we do do that, and that goes through the budget cycle each year. So that's another mechanism here, but they have to apply for the funds. And then you all, city council makes those decisions during the budget cycle.
Planned charitable giving.
So my question to the counselors is, is there interest in proceeding with council memorandum 21? Or do we let it go and, and not advocate passing it tonight? Head nods. Well, we don't, we're not, we're not about to pass it tonight.
Or just, I mean, I think we need to either flesh it out a little bit more or, 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 or make it.
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying to give John the, the ability to do. Either flesh it out, look into it more deeply, or say, no, we're not interested in pursuing.
Sir, maybe to increase the amount of money that we give to the people who already handle these things, like put more money in, in our budget for, uh, for, for them to, uh, to give them when a crisis comes up.
Well, for instance, we, the city doesn't give money to community foundations.
They apply for the, um, $10,000 that we split between usually three groups. Could we not increase the amount of money there? And maybe they could, uh, have more money, maybe more. Pretty much a given that those three groups are going to get that money every year.
That has to do with the arts, right?
I'm thinking, yeah, I am, I'm sorry, I'm got it confused.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I personally don't have interest in pursuing, uh, this memorandum further because I, I've, I feel that in our discussion tonight, we've kind of covered how we would handle local emergency. Using outside agencies that are already doing it, but also a true immediate emergency likely, I feel would involve fire or police. And we already have agreements, uh, to help with that too. So I, I personally, I, I, I'm not interested in moving forward with this particular.
Counselors.
I'm going to agree with that and go through the, the channels we already have established. Um, and if that means increasing that funding or maybe making it easier in the, in the event of an emergency to happen to that or Waynesboro if they were to need something.
That's it to tell. Counselor Robertson.
I, I mean, I, I didn't mean to create a cocony.
Right.
These things could happen. Seems like more and more they happen.
Personally, I mean, I, I love the idea of having it there in special circumstances that we could send it to wherever it, it, you know, and, and if the citizens don't like it, then fine, vote our butts out. You know, I mean, that's what we're elected by the citizens to represent them. If they don't like what we do, then get rid of us. But I, yeah, I said, I didn't mean to create a problem, but it was just simply from the heart that we were trying to help our fellow citizens of this country. And, you know, that's what it is. So I, I'm in favor, yeah, that we, we don't have to. But if it's there, something that we can send, you know, God forbid something terrible happen. But that's just my feeling.
So, right.
Counselor.
Yeah. I, I think that, you know, the memorandum itself, you know, on its face is not a bad thing because it, it would allow us to have that, that option moving forward. But just like any other memorandum, it's, it's, you know, if the majority of council wants something in, in the, the memorandums, they add it. And if they don't, then they can take something out. So, you know, I, I understand the thought process and everybody's wishes. So, you know, I'm fine not moving forward with it tonight, but I do think it's something that we probably should, you know, at least now it's, it's in our forethought. And, you know, if we want to look at it later, then so be it.
Counselor Woods.
It's either or to me. It's like, so it's like not having our money allocated to maybe something that we don't want. So if there was in particular something that I didn't, I wasn't going to contribute to, and then all of a sudden, my money. Anyway, it's picking and choosing to do that. So I would, then I look at it as having it there just in case somebody down the line wants to do it. I mean, it's not saying that we all going to be here for the next six, eight, 16 years, but as going forward, looking forward, I just, I'll just say, just to keep it all, I'll just say, no. Just take it out.
Besides, Jesse's a miracle worker. She'll find us the money if we want to give it away to somebody.
We, I asked her beforehand, before, and she said, oh, it's there.
We brought it up. Now people are aware that it's something that can be done later on down the line. If another set of counselors want to do it, then let them do it.
So. All right, well, I think it was a wonderful discussion we had. And I think the consensus is here on council not to proceed with it at this point. And, uh, thank you, John, for working this up and giving this proposal.
Mark, I, I just.
Mark.
I, I think you're ideal. I think, I think it was from my heart. I think it was from the heart and, and, and I don't mean to, to.
Oh, no, I get it. I mean, I understand both sides of it. I get it absolutely.
All right, I'm running 30, 15 minutes ahead. Can I please have a motion to go to a closed meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to, oh, thank you. I moved to enter a closed meeting for discussion of performance of a council-appointed employee, the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Holmes is the second. Mr. Kessinger, please call a roll.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowwood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now in closed session. We will return at 6:59. Good evening. Before we can start to meet, we have to come out of our closed session. So, uh, at this point, so.
Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Kessinger, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Arrowwood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. And now we're allowed to start the October twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting or call to order. Would y'all please join me in doing the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight's invocation moment of silence will be provided by Counselor Holmes.
I'm not very good at this, but I would like this, this, um, we lost some, a really good citizen, um. Uh, Mark Vigilante this week and, um, I, I don't know, most of us know Mark and, or, but he was like the. Premier caterer in, in, in Stanton from probably the late seventies until. Probably early two thousands anyway, but, uh, he was a good person and, and I just like my heart goes out to his family and. Just bow my head and, and, and respect for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. That's a big loss. Um, we went to first grade with my wife. The whole family for a very long time. Thank you for that. Well. That brings us to the mayor's report and I've got too much paperwork up here on my desk. Because we went and did too much this past week and we, uh. Several of us attended the, uh, convention down in Norfolk and I went down early for the mayor's convention and there was about. There are thirty-seven towns that have mayors and there's thirty-eight cities, I believe, that have mayors. And so out of that seventy-five people or so, there was probably forty to fifty that attended the mayor's conference. And it was interesting and it's, it's fun to be with, with your other. People that are sharing the, the same problems that you are. We had some wonderful discussions and I learned a lot and it was, it was a wonderful thing and. With four nights away from home, it was a, uh, it was a long week. The rest of the council came and I'll let some of them tell. About, uh, their experiences, um, from, uh. We all arrived on Sunday at noon, but, but I am certifiable. It's been questioned for. If I'm certified, but this, uh, I did complete the, uh, successful completion of the Virginia mayor's institute.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. This was very hard fought for you. But it was funny. I learned a lot. So, uh, the other thing I want to say is this morning I, I attended the tourism advisory board meeting. And boy, are they going in high gear. Of course, everybody thinks, well, September, they have mystery and magic, but they had. A ton of other, uh, events going on this past month and, and they really gear up in the fall season. And they've been extraordinarily active. And I think one of the interesting things they brought up was, um. Lodging and food tax collection, we heard last meeting have been very high. But they were high all through the spring of this year and since once summer hit, everything's been pretty flat. And I think you have to be aware of the fact that they're now up against, um, decent figures. This time last year. We were busy, just like we are now, you know, with the outdoor dining and the tourism and all that. And they're, um. The numbers are still up for the year-to-date, but, um, they're slowing down a little bit and they're, they're a little flatter than they were in prior years. And I mean. Maybe Terry's experiencing the same thing. Still booming. Good for you.
I tell you, it's been crazy.
But, um, they, they have a lot of interesting, uh, things planned for the fourth quarter. Shakespeare is back and that's a. That's a real bonus for us to be able to report that they are selling out. We have a new train that's coming into town. Uh, and that's exciting and, and some of us went on the inaugural run for that and there was over four hundred people that, uh, they got on this. This is different from the thirty-two passenger train that they had earlier. That was just going from here to Goshen or here to Charlotte, um. And Croze and back, but this was the big, uh, steam locomotive. It was pretty exciting to see. And, um, they're doing that for weekends and it's pretty much a sellout, I hear. Also, they will be doing the, the smaller train will be doing, uh, Santa runs, I believe in November and December. So. If you get an opportunity, uh, take advantage of some of these great train rides that are available around Stanton and, uh, support Shakespeare Theater. It's. It was a vibrant part of our community and that is, uh, that really got wiped out by COVID. And it has taken a while to get it back up and running and, uh, I'm pleased to, they, they were very happy to announce this morning at the meeting that. Things are looking up and, uh, they, their shows are selling out again. And it was back to, as they called it. The two thousand nineteen numbers, which is a real positive. That means we're back to pre-COVID. So that's my report and, um, I'll turn it over to other members of council and let them report on where all they have been.
Uh, well, Mr. Mayor, I had a, had the opportunity yesterday and today to attend the, uh, Stanley Augusta Waynesboro Housing Summit. Uh, there that was, uh, put together by the, uh, Community Foundation of Blue Ridge, Central Blue Ridge, uh, our local community foundation. Uh, very well attended. Alice was there as well, um, packed in, a lot of great ideas. Uh, it was a focus on, on doing things that could actually get. Uh, traction and are doable. You know, these, these are people not interested in just floating ideas that'll never happen. We, we got some, some. Great ways to move forward, a lot of good contacts, uh, as well in there for ideas that we can do moving forward with the housing commission here. And other things in our area. So that was, uh, that was some time went well spent, I think, for us. Very good.
Mr. Mayor. I'll just continue with.
Counselor.
I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah.
So I wanted to say, uh, the conference that I attended, my first, uh, VML conference was. A really eye-opening, meeting people that are serving on council and have served on council for, for a long time from cities I'd never heard of. Uh, towns I'd never heard of. I've lived in Virginia for fifty-five years and, uh, really had my eyes open. One of the most exciting things I heard about that is coming to, uh, somewhere near you is unmanned Uber air service. Um, more about that later. Uh, we, you know, I attended workshops on, uh, grants, federal grants, state grants, economic, how to, uh, look at. Economic development projects, um, just so many great things that I look forward to talking with others about in the future. So I was happy to do that and spend more time, uh, with also council members from Stanton. I wanted to let everyone know last Friday, I was lucky to, uh, have a tour with our school superintendent, Dr. Garrett Smith. We, uh, toured, uh, the high school. I have not entered the high school since my son graduated several years ago and wow, has it changed. That school is absolutely beautiful. We should all be extremely proud of the fact that we have. Honestly, a state-of-the-art institution, secondary institution for our students to go to. And I only wish my kids were a little bit younger so they could have. Had that experience, but, uh, you know, as a former high school stu, uh, high school teacher, just seeing how students behave in, in a beautiful. Place. They behaved with so much respect for the, for the environment they were in, for one another, for their teachers. It, it really was a change from what I had previously, previously experienced and, and just so impressed. Had a great time at Ware Elementary School. Those are the most adorable children in the world. I should have been an elementary teacher. I watched fifth graders reading to first graders and then in the spring, the first graders will be reading to the fifth graders and just was beautiful, beautiful. Um, activity I was able to see. And, um, also went to Shelburne, saw, uh, saw, uh, the. Where the renovations will be taking place, uh, hopefully in the near future. So very glad to, to be able to see that with my own eyes. And then the following day on Saturday. I went to the Kindness Matters Walkathon and I don't know how I did it, but I walked four miles for, for Stanton City Schools. And it was a lot of fun. Families, kids, administrators, teachers, everybody was out to support, uh, the Kindness Matters, uh, campaign. And then finally, um, Mr. Mayor, you did not, uh, say this, but we, uh, attended and maybe, uh, council member Darby will say. We attended the Augusta Health, uh, Evening Social and comment on that. But we attended a, an evening at Augusta Health. Heard a presentation about the community, uh, services that they're providing and what interested me most was the eleven mobile clinics. That they offer around our area, I think three of which are, are right here in Stanton. So three times a month, uh, we have mobile clinics around the city. Uh, one being at, um, Allen Chapel, uh, one is at the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center and then also at the Mission. So. If you're interested in that, please go to the hospital's website and check that out. Thank you very much.
Except just work, work, work.
I, uh, also attended the VML conference and, and it was a really wonderful, um, experience, always good information. Makes us, um, think about lots of different things that we can bring back here to Stanton. Uh, attended the Augusta Health, uh, Fall Social for government officials and it's always, um. What a gem we have, uh, here, uh, near us, uh, to, to hear about what's happening there and. And, you know, the outlook and future and things like that. So that's all, um, positive information to share with you today.
All right, Counsel Woods?
Well, since I've been on the road for the last two weeks, it's all been a little bit overwhelming. It's, it's for work and for work. So. My regular job and then council, that's work too. So, um, I haven't fully taken it all in, but I did learn a lot at the VML. It was good to meet, uh, a lot of people from different localities, different towns and like. Michelle stated about cities that I didn't even know existed and, and that's one thing. But one thing that really stuck out to me was about. One session that we went to that was, um, talked about how to get. All of our community engaged and in the city and what they want to see in the city. And one of the things that they did was have. Festivals throughout the city. So have little festivals and give people opportunity to say, what would you like to see in your town, in your city? And that just, that just stuck out to me because we know there's a lot of citizens here that don't even, aren't engaged really. In coming to city council meetings or sometimes they don't know what's going on. And, um, don't even know who the councillors are. So this is a great opportunity to, to have engaged with. All of the citizens of Stanton. So I thought that was interesting. Um. The SAW, uh, Housing Summit was just jam-packed as you heard, uh, Brad mentioned and it was like. A lot of people, what really stuck out to me was that all the people there really cared about us having. All of these localities, how the housing stock is so limited. And another thing that stuck out to me is. Is the statistics of how we are so behind, uh, where we used to be. So they went back to from nineteen sixty up to nineteen ninety where they was building, building, building and all of a sudden. It stopped and we, we are not building and how far we behind in just having affordable housing. Just housing itself, whether it's apartments, whether it's homeownership and all those things where we know that. The communities are growing, uh, the country is getting bigger. So where are the housing? Where is rental properties? Where is homeownership? Where is all these people at that is billions of people here and we are there. And we know that some that are unhoused because we see them here in our own community, uh. Homelessness and unsheltered people. And then we have, when we talk about that, we also talk about the people that is living with family members, adult children. With children or, you know, somebody's living with friends and hopping. So that was just good to know that. A lot of people in that room cared and it's not just about talk. It's about solutions that we can come up with. To see how we can combat that here in the Shenandoah Valley. So that was, that was a whole lot. So. That's all I have right now.
One, one thing in the housing sound, I forgot to mention, remember what they said about the, um, in years past, the average days. On market for a house on the market was like fifty, uh, a year days and currently it's six.
Six days.
Or it goes. So that, that speaks to the, the scarcity of available housing, uh, here. And often those are cash deals that, that, you know. Regular people that need financing, uh, can't come up with. So it's just a, we're in a real precarious state.
And then also, so thank you. So brings back to mind about, uh, Augusta Health was there also. And he talked about the mobile clinics that some of us already knew about, but, uh, it was a doctor there from Augusta Health that taught, that let us know how. They are now addressing and helping the people that come into the hospitals, the appointments, the. Doctor's office or the ER and just asking them, you know, not. We know people aren't always truthful and was going to tell you, well, I don't have a place to live, but they are caring about it because they recognize that. Housing is healthcare. So when you don't have a place to lay your head at night, you don't have a warm bed to sleep in. You don't have shelter over your head that, that affects the whole person. And that also costs the city money. That costs us money for when people go into the ER and they don't have, uh, insurance, they don't have regular doctors. And they are utilizing these services and that also, you know, costs, costs money too. But sometimes they, they can write that off, but other than that, it is, uh, it would be a great savings if everybody had somewhere to live. So. Okay, I'm done.
I worked this weekend.
All right. Well, thank you all for being so active in our community. That, that brings up the consent agenda, which is for our regular meeting. Per council memorandum number fourteen is the policy of city council. To have routine, non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be fo, voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, then that item shall be removed. And considered separately at the end of the regular meeting agenda. Do council members desire to remove any items from the council? Agenda to be placed on the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? The head nods, tell me no. Therefore, I will accept an honor for the, uh, to approve the consent agenda, which tonight. Will involve the approval of minutes of the work session and regular meeting of September twenty-eighth. A consideration of revised city council procedure memorandum number thirteen, naming of public facilities. A consideration of proclamation to be presented in council chambers on October twenty-sixth. City council meeting Stanton City Schools attendance awareness, attendance, awareness month. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor Claffey.
Vice Mayor Darby.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Woods is second. Mr. Kessinger, please call a roll.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item B, which is a public hearing and consideration of a request by John Shaw. Seven oh nine North Augusta Street to rezone seven oh nine North Augusta Street from B one Local Business District to B two. General Business District Conditional. Ms. Bogart.
Uh, Rodney Rhodes, Senior Planner, will introduce this item tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you. As the mayor noted, uh, John Schaub, it has requested a rezoning of seven oh nine North Augusta Street from B one Local Business District. To B two General Business District Conditional, uh, in order to develop a fifteen to twenty-barrel microbrewery and tasting room. Uh, he has noted that he may also develop a restaurant at a future time. The requested rezoning would allow the project to develop in phases with a restaurant potentially being added at a la, later date. Under the current zoning, eating and drinking establishments and restaurants are permitted by rights. These uses could be developed with the issuance of a, of a building permit. The brewery, the brewing of beer would also be permitted as an accessory to the restaurant. And I would note an example that we've had of that in the recent past, several years ago, there was a brewery, um, on North Augusta Street. Near Terry Court that also had a brick fired pizza oven. So it was a restaurant with a brewery. In the B one zoning district, same as what the applicant currently has here. Um, with the proposed rezoning, the reason, the restaurant could be. With the proposed rezoning, the reason the restaurant could be would not need to be established in order for the beer production to commence. And we have two current examples of that in the Wharf District. We have a brewery and also have a cider. Those are zone B2. They do not serve food, but they're allowed as an accessory. They are allowed to 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 produce the beer and cider onsite and serve it there in the B2 district. As far as this little location of this proposed facility, it's at the old Coca-Cola bottling works. The original building first appeared on the 1929 Sanborn Maps. That was the original portion of the building. It's been added on to a couple of times since then. The lot itself is approximately 30,000 square feet. And the building footprint is approximately 26,000 square feet. It's pretty much stretches from front to back nearly entire length of the lot. And it's an almost entire width of the lot also with with service areas on both the northern and southern sides. And back in the 1970s, Coca-Cola ceased operations at this location. As I've already noted, the current zoning, the property B1 Local Business District, which allows eating and drinking establishments. Therefore, the tasting room component of the proposed use is permitted by right. Also, a restaurant could be added by right with no rezoning or special approvals necessary. A restaurant would be obviously be a more intense use, creating the need for more employees, deliveries, and attracting more customers. For the beer to be produced onsite without being in conjunction with a restaurant, the zoning must be changed to B2 General Business District. The applicant has submitted profits that would further restrict the utilization of the property. And obviously, when people look at this site and think about it being used again for commercial purposes, the first thought is where are people going to park? In 2009, the Stanton City Code was amended to add exceptions to the required off street parking requirements to exempt commercial buildings with little or no front, side, or rear setbacks. As I previously noted, this building pretty much takes up the entire lot. So there is no room on the lot for parking. And I would note that this amendment to the parking requirements was done to encourage this type of redevelopment of existing commercial buildings. However, at that time, this property became exempt from requiring off street parking. So no off street parking can be required for this project or any other commercial project at the site. And staff acknowledges that the use of this property as proposed will create more traffic in the area. However, the production of beer should not have any significant impact on the area. It does not create smoke, odor, dust, noise, or any noticeable increase in traffic. And consideration should be given to the fact that the current zoning already allows the tasting room and restaurant. And as far as the the beer production, the applicant has noted that that will only require two employees. The zoning code allows up to 10 people in the production in the B2 district. However, the applicant says it will only take me two. The applicant also notes that as far as deliveries, that they will be done by pickups or small box trucks and likely only once or twice a week. And the applicant in the architectural renderings with the application showed the potential for 11 indoor parking spaces. And the applicant has noted they are actively looking to purchase or lease additional properties in the area to create off street parking. As far as adjoining uses, there are a mixture of commercial B1 and B2 properties and also residential properties R2 low density and R4 high density. The city of Stanton Conference of Plan Future Land Use Map designates the front three fourths of this property as business and the and the back fourth quarter of the property closest to Baptist Street is neighborhood residential. So obviously, the business designation would support the proposed use. In conclusion, the proposed rezoning would permit the restoration and reuse of a large commercial property that has been underutilized for decades with a clean, historically appropriate business. The property has been zoned for business use since the city adopted its first zoning ordinance in 1938. The proposed rezoning would also permit the phasing of the development with a more intense use. The restaurant added it added at a later date and providing the applicant more time to explore off street parking options as the business develops. The Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August 17th, 2023. During the public hearing, eight people spoke in opposition to the request. Their concerns were generally about parking, traffic, noise, odors, issues with the former Coca-Cola bottling operation, and concerns with the currently permitted uses such as a restaurant and drinking establishments. Plan Commission tabled action on the request at that meeting. And at their September 21st, 2023 meeting, the Plan Commission considered the request and took additional public comments. During the public comment period, six people spoke in opposition to the request. I would note that 10 spoke in support of the application. And on a four to zero vote, the commission voted to recommend approval of a conditional rezoning. And I believe you've also received an email from the city manager this week with about 40, 42 emails either for or against this proposal. I'd be glad to take any questions you have now or after you conduct the public hearing.
First off, councilors, do you have any questions? Mr. Rhodes.
I just want to clarify and and state that I do know there are such things as stupid questions, but I just want to make sure because it's an important vote. I just want to make sure Rodney, when I when when we when I make this vote, is that we should separate the fact that this could eventually be a restaurant because by right, it already could be a restaurant. So it's not something that we should be taking into account when we make this vote, correct?
It is correct that it could be a restaurant with the mere smittle of building permit plans and to convert the space to a restaurant.
I see this vote is actually, well, yeah, it's not forcing him to open a restaurant.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Other questions from councilors? All right. Well, in that case, we're going to open up a public hearing.
Mayor, the applicant is here to present before you.
Please, please, yes. Could you please bottom up?
Sir, could you say your last name? I've heard it a couple of ways.
It's the last name is Shabe. It's spelled Schob, but O E is pronounced A. That's the way I was told growing up.
Very good.
Thank you all for your time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just just to let the applicant know, per the rules, you'll have 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time tonight. My name is John Shabe. I am a recently retired dentist about a month ago. Once we got the Stanton Project in motion, I retired from dentistry to focus on what my other business is, which is Pro Renata Brewery in Crozay. My best friend and I started that just eight years ago last week. We bought a dilapidated, falling down loyal of Moose Lodge in Crozay. It was an eyesore. A lot of people said knock it down. We didn't want to do that. We put significant time, money, and effort and converted the old building into something we're really proud of. We, due to the success over there, we've expanded that project. It has now become a focal point of Crozay. The number of people that come up to me on a weekend and say, thank you so much for doing this. This is what Crozay needed. On a Saturday, when I'm there and there are people there, my wife says to me, do you need this? Does your ego need this? And I said, absolutely. That's what from a restaurant owner, it's a great feeling when there are people coming in telling you how much you like their place or how much they like your place. It's that's what we do this for. We've grown, we've expanded, we've been a good neighbor. I don't have complaints. If 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 there was a complaint, I shouldn't say there haven't been complaints. If there was a complaint, I addressed it, I dealt with it, spoke to the neighbors, and it never happened again. I'm a good neighbor to the people around Pro Renata Brewery. What we're trying to do here, and Rodney Rhodes explained it absolutely perfectly. Right now, we could do what we want to do, but we have to open a restaurant. I don't want to open a restaurant at this point. We are merging or partnering up with Chip Clark, who owns the steam plant building. What we're trying to do is to manufacture beer at the Coca-Cola facility and ship that beer to my business in Crozay and to ship that beer to the sister project at the steam plant. The steam plant's going to have a restaurant when we open. The steam plant's going to have a bar when we open. That's not what we're trying to do with the Coke plant. Will there be a restaurant in the future? Probably. It's years down the road if possible. There are a lot of good businesses, a lot of good restaurants in the area that we've already spoken with that want to partner up and deliver food to people, and we will allow people to bring their own food in, so we don't have to do a restaurant. We're really focusing on the beer manufacturing. You need two employees. We don't distribute beer at this point. My beer is not in restaurants. It's not in grocery stores. We are not a large facility. In eight years, if I was going to distribute, I already would have done it. That's just not a business that I want to get into at this point. The only place that our beer is going is to the steam plant and to Crozay. And we have to actually serve it onsite at the Coke facility also. We cannot just manufacture. We have to have a tasting room by law. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take a a building that I've been trying to buy for the last six years. The I started looking at that building in 2016, and it took me six years and years of persistence to get Mr. Sater to sell it to me. It is phenomenal on the inside, the architecture, the design. We're trying to keep all of that. We're working with the Historic Society, Historic Tax Credits to rebuild that building and reuse what is there. We are not, there are three small changes in that building that you would never see. Other than that, that's what we're trying to do. We run a clean business. I run a good business. I'm a good neighbor. And I want to renovate that building and bring something really special to Stanton. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
So it comes with a tasting room that's coming with people to come to taste the beer.
Yes, ma'am.
So that that same thing as a restaurant, you want to need space for people to park. So I know it's not required off street parking, it's not required. But you said in your correspondence that you was going to try to accommodate.
We have. I I right now I'm in talks with two neighbors, one on the same side of the street as the Coke building and one across the street. I've spoken to real estate agents and let them know that if they hear of any properties that are coming on the market that we that are suitable for parking that to please contact me.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Shabe.
Yes, sir.
If this project can go forward, what what kind of timeline are we looking at? Like start to finish and being ready to go?
We think once we get permitting, historical tax credits, Historic Society, and all the necessary paperwork, once that's in and permits are issued, we think it's about a year construction.
Eric, do you have a question?
I just wonder what beers you're going to be producing.
Just a good IPA, please.
I I actually have a, I like stouts and.
We have a very good coffee stout.
I think a few, but I know Mr. Claffey was there, I was there. But when you did that tour, I had a chance to go through the building there too. It's really interesting thing that's been put together in different phases over the decades on that. And and you were talking about some of your plans on there. Initially, there was a plan for an open garden area. But I understand that has had to change with Historic Credits.
We're still working on that.
Okay.
The it did not go over real well initially, and maybe Chip, my partner, can explain a little bit more than that. We're not giving up on that yet. It was just, that was just an initial phone conversation of what we were thinking. And with the Historic Society and the way those work, you're supposed to keep certain aspects of it. We're still working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Chip Clark, I'm partnered with John here on the two projects.
Except to the microphone, please.
Sorry about that. Yeah, Chip Clark, I'm the partner on the project here with John at 709, and also the owner at 421 or 420 Richmond Road, the steam plant. The roof issue was really just a preliminary discussion with the HR. DHR didn't like the idea. They don't like substantial changes to roof lines and things that have lots of sight. But she also gave us some guidelines of what we can work with. So we just got to go back to the drawing board and figure out what's practical. There's a lot of roof there. The roof's in very poor condition. It's going to have to be taken down, including the trusses that support it. So, you know, if we're going to go that far, then the question is, what do we do with that structure once we have it? Have it down in pieces. So, yeah, we're still working it through, and I think there's still options.
You know, if it's enclosed, wouldn't it be a lot quieter to the neighbors around it?
There would be, but there's still on that bottom floor, there's 26,000 square feet. So even if you had two or 3,000 feet exposed, you still have quite a few, quite a bit of square footage that's interior. So I think there's looking at everything from skylight options to alternate covers to exposing it, to exposing part of it. Who knows what that solution is going to be, but we've got to go back to the drawing board to look at it. I'm like, we've got anywhere anywhere close to a solid, you know, answer as to how we would approach it.
And Mr. Shabe, one thing in the tour that people were asking about were concerns with noise. And I believe you mentioned you would, even if that was an open area, you were never going to have music outside or.
We would never have music that you could have someone playing a guitar. But we have an outside stage at Pro Renata right now. The only music that is allowed out there is acoustic. There are no percussions, no drums, nothing is allowed outside. Someone playing a guitar, John Denver style, is not going to break any type of noise ordinance. We would never put a band outside like that. We don't do it at Pro Renata because of neighbors. We do that inside. And along that line, the building at Pro Renata was, the entire building was designed by sound engineers to contain sound to the inside. We have R59 insulation in all the walls, all the ceilings. If you walk 50 to 75 feet from that building, you can't, you won't even know there's a concert going on. And with the courtyard, letting more light into that building, the building is dark. And so we're trying to bring it, for those of you that came on the tour, trying to bring in some additional light into that center space. There are very few outdoor open spaces, restaurants here in Stanton, that we would really like to create something different. And as Chip said, we're we're still working our way through that.
Well, we're also pretty excited about what Chip's doing out there to the old power plant. So I can't hardly wait for that to come about.
When I first came to Stanton, six years ago, he had just bought it and I didn't know it because that was that was a building that I looked at. But or wanted to look at, but they said it had just been bought. And then happenstance, we end up chalking one day.
I might be one of the few.
That building, it's it's got a lot of potential.
Oh, it does. I might be one of the few people to remember what the original Coca-Cola bottling plant was like in the early 60s when it was going with the six and a half ounce glass bottles and the metal conveyors. And when they were bottling, they would get rattling and and it would shake the ground when you were in the in the vicinity. It was it was amazing production. But you know, there was nothing better than the six and a half ounce Coca-Cola.
Still isn't, really, when it comes to service.
You you remember.
And we have, we have a lot of the old pallets from the Coca-Cola time. They're different pallets than anything you've ever seen. We do have some of that conveyor belt too.
Amazing. Well, it'd be great to see the the facility reused and get some production coming out of it again. That'd be wonderful. Any other questions from councilor?
Since you're going to have this establishment, are you planning on bottling or anything or?
We we don't now. We do. We do some cans and we only sell them onsite. We might go into some restaurants. Distribution is just, when I started this eight years ago, I said, the minute this doesn't become fun, I'm going to shut it down. It was fun enough that I quit dentistry. Distribution is just a really tough, cutthroat business, and it's just not something that I want to be a part of.
All right. Well, let me open this up to a public hearing. And this is a time where city council listens to citizens about this specific topic. We ask you that you please give your name, your address, keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we will alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. This public hearing is for the Augusta Street property only. Now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
My name is Clinton Davis, 219 Sunnyside Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm one of the oldest residents up there. And at one time, according to 1980, 85 records, that was called Gallows Town, they home people up there. And very many of the other residents are not very pleased at something like this. I don't know what the emails you have, but I I have never seen this gentleman in my. I don't know what the emails you have, but I, I have never seen this gentleman in my neighborhood at all. At all, I don't know how long, he's six years, don't make no difference. He hadn't been here. He hadn't come up there and talked to nobody. I got two nineteen signs, I ain't seen him at all. And then when he had that mess with, uh, Marino's, parked cars, hitting parked cars, swiping parked cars, they were sitting up there uh, drinking and, and, uh, the, they saw, sold, uh, sold the miners. They sit up there, one of the members, one of the members said, we gonna sit up there, they had customers coming in there saying they were gonna name drinks and dishes after black people. I didn't, I don't think, that was in the last six, that was in the last year. Now, I don't think you got this coming in here. And what we had to put up with at Marino's, that's a bona fide thing. I don't care how much he paid for that junk down there. We've been there, we've been there, we've been there, we remember when the place built. My great granddaddy bought my house in eighteen eighty-seven. They invented Coke in eighteen eighty-five. Now you can say what you want. But that's the black community back there. They ain't coming there and asked nobody nothing. I got a problem with my next door neighbor. He bought the lot beside me with twenty six thousand dollars on the last year. We just had an argument on that, just now. But like I said, the men that lived there, my great granddaddy bought that lot and four other lots and they got no easements at all in that, that property where I live. And he tried to put a house in there. There's no east, there's no sewer. Same problem you got problem down in Union Town. You got right beside me. There's a rock out problem runs all the way down there. The gentleman that lived there, Mr. Harry Ella, worked forty years with the railroad. He did not have, he and his wife and two daughters, one's still living. They sat down there and bathed in the wash tub until night, in the, in the night. And he had a sit down toilet right beside they knocked, the sister, the daughter knocked the house down because she got tired of the city. Uh, uh, talking about waiting, wait, uh, come up there and fix this and fix that. And she tried to do the best, because she lived in North Carolina. And right now that she went on, told me, I said, you know, escalator? I said, yeah. Got E C E was a knock it down. So with the foundations sitting there, rocks back there, I got sticking, uh, grass, that's what I was complaining about now. We got grass and stuffs up there right beside two seventeen, sitting right there. I got deer coming in my backyard. We got scum. We got, Dylan just got through complaining about snakes coming in the backyard. Now you got somebody coming up, I wanna do, put a brewery or whatever, a Coke plant in the back of the neighborhood looks like hell. I'm sorry. You gotta dress your neighbors around in it and they all black, most of them. But yet you gonna put six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a place and your back of it looks like hell. You never can, plus you haven't even addressed the people that lived there. They came here yet, only those forty people you got on those emails or whatever. When we came in here, the first time, neither showed up. He came late. We came in the planning commission. We came back, we came back, but seemed like we don't get no, no say enough. Because they passing it right around, they coming in the neighborhood, the houses are going from, in the last three years, one house went from seven, they gave, the kids gave away for fifteen thousand dollars, so one sixty-nine. Another one sold for, there was twenty thousand dollars, died, died in the house two years ago. His sad brother gave it, gave it away for twenty thousand dollars. That sold for a hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. Then right beside that, off a house just four, less than a month, two months ago. It went for seventy thousand dollars, less than two years ago. It sold for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two months, uh, less than two, uh, about, less than a month ago. And I mean to tell me that I have, here's a list of sixty-one people that live in Old Sunnyside. There's only seven hours left. And I mean, you gonna, you gonna stand for something like that? He ain't mentioned none, but I got told in the planning commission, I said, it's about beers and blacks. All you hear about is beer, but I don't hear none about no blacks. I think y'all needed to dress this thing big time. Cause all people up there, all them up there, they had nobody addressed. He ain't rode nowhere, six months or eight months, a year. He had never been anywhere around it. Okay, but that's, but me and, me and, the only one I had business with one time, Mr. Mayor, he came by when he had need of, of wash, oh, oh, mop, mop bucket. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
You needed a mop bucket.
There's the man to go to. Mr. Kessler.
Yes, sir.
Do we have someone on, Lon?
We do.
Caller, go ahead. Caller. Are you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? This is Brenda Mead.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I'm very much in support of, of the, what, what we need to do in order to rezone this property so that it can be, be, become productive. Uh, so that it can be, it can add, uh, uh, value to the neighborhood. And with all due respect to my friend who's the mayor of Sunnyside, uh, I, I think this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Welcome.
I'm Renee Clark. I live in Sunnyside. I've lived there for over twenty-five years. Um, I am in support of the project. I'm so glad that the building is gonna be reused and reused historically and responsibly. Um, I came to the first, uh, meeting and learned about it. And I've also been to the planning meetings and went on the tour and I have found, um, John and his partner Chip to be very open to hearing from the community and they had an open house. Probably I would say two hundred plus people came, maybe three hundred. Um, they put out flyers to invite the citizens of Sunnyside to come down. Very few people did come down from Sunnyside. I was one of the people who did. So we were definitely welcomed, anybody who came there. Um, also the history of Sunnyside, I know that, um, John has said that they want to include that to make people aware of what was going on at the Coke plant location prior to the Coke plant being there. Uh, there also was a dance hall. There was a theater that they're trying to find more information on. Um, so you know, having something on a wall where that could be, uh, to educate people about the community of Sunnyside, which I'm in favor of that because I think lots of people don't know that. They just know the Coke plant. And the Coke plant had some bad things, you know, they, they weren't good neighbors. And so I'm sure that's one of the bigger reasons why the Sunnyside community also is very upset because in the past, there was some trauma associated with Coke plant. But I don't believe that's what Pro Renata is gonna do. Um, they've proven themselves in Croze. I have been there. I've seen their facility. I think they're gonna be excellent neighbors and, uh, that place is an eyesore. I mean, if, if it just is left to sit there, which I know that's not gonna happen now, but I mean, it, it was basically gonna fall in. I mean, I'll walk by and I see rats coming out of it and all kinds of stuff and it's kind of embarrassing. And I think it's great that it's coming to Sunnyside and I'm super excited about it and that's why I keep coming to speak. Um, my mom also is super excited about it. She looks out her window and saw a tree growing out of it for years, the roof. It's just happy that it's gonna be repaired. So, um, I do know that the community is upset and I'm kind of, you know, one of a few stepping up, but I know there've been other people in the community that are now also have been there for a long time and are viewing it more favorably. Uh, when they know that they're just trying to make a bad situation great. I think actually the building is gonna be fantastic. And historic restoration is expensive. So we are very, very lucky that someone wants to come in and do this and come up with the money to fund it. Otherwise we'd be using taxpayers' dollars to tear it down at some point. So I just wanna say, I'm very glad they're here and I'm glad they're gonna be my neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
No, sir. I have no one with their hands raised.
Would anyone else from the audience like to speak? All right, with that, I'm gonna close the open hearing and call for a motion.
Mayor Claffey.
Counselor Holmes.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the conditional rezoning as recommended by the planning commission.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, third.
Counselor Arrowood, thank you. Mr. Kessler, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Ocean Carries.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. We look forward to you taking over the Coca-Cola plant.
I would like to, uh, point out, I, I did have a chance earlier to go through the, the packet of emails that Leslie forwarded along to us and it was uh, forty for it and one against.
Very good. All right, that brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is the update on modernizing city refuse collection. Ms. Beauregard.
Hey, I guess this is our official kickoff to start modernizing our trash systems. Uh, we kind of got through the recycling process. We've got a new recycling center up and going, which is great. So now it's time to start this process. We're really excited. Um, so I'm gonna let Jeff Johnson walk through this and then, um, kind of what we're planning to do, um, going forward.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good to be back up here. Um, and it's a great opportunity to talk about, uh, something that we are all very excited about, Public Works. Uh, but to be fair, represents a fair amount of work moving forward. Uh, and so we'll talk a little bit about. Have it up here, Colin.
Not pushing hard.
I have no doubt this is my fault. So let's be clear. There we go. So I'll go a little bit about the, the program, uh, some of the steps, and then I think the, the thing that a lot of folks are interested in, which is a proposed schedule. Uh, so a quick reminder of what we're talking about, uh, this is what's coming. Uh, standardized city-owned bins. Now we've got examples out in the lobby. If you hadn't had a chance to check it out, uh, please do. Uh, I think you'll find that they're nice, they're sturdy, uh, they're very durable, uh, they're very well balanced. Uh, we actually have some, uh, some sample trash in them, so give them a little weight. Uh, they're actually very easy to move. Uh, because they, with the large wheels and, and, and the good balance, uh, but I encourage everybody to take a good look at them. Give them a ten, a short test drive around the lobby. Do not need, uh, folks racing trash cans around City Hall. But, uh, to get a feel for, uh, what's coming. And we've ordered some additional ones. We'll get them uh, out to the library, uh, to Public Works, try and get as many people an opportunity to look at these in advance.
It's a either or, or you can?
It'll be, it'll be an either or. It'll be, uh, it'll be a choice, uh, for folks. And, uh, and then of course up at Public Works, uh, we'll be getting some mechanical tippers on the backs of our truck. Uh, to, to be fair, that is the cleanest refuse truck I've ever seen in my life. Uh, but again, you'll notice that the actual lifters just bolt onto the back. Uh, it's a relatively simple process and it doesn't preclude, uh, the hand loading, uh, if necessary. Uh, so when they're not, when they're not actually, uh, tipping, uh, the bins, uh, they're relatively low profile and the sill height for the hopper remains the same. So it's a, yes, Counselor Woods.
Go back to slide.
Yep.
Thank you. So the forty-eight gallon bin, you say three to four trash bags.
About, yes.
About.
About.
Is the trash bags full? You know how people like the.
Right, right. So again, it's a, it's a function of what's, how, how full they are and what's in them, but it's a forty-eight gallon. It's a forty-eight gallon bin. Most tall kitchen cash bags are rated at thirteen gallons.
Yes.
So three to four.
Jeff, is, is it purely just a choice at the same price for residents?
Yes, right now it's, it's choice, uh, at the same price. So the, the, the can that's most convenient for you, oh, as, as your choice.
So when you say.
I thought the price was free.
Well.
Yes, so again, no change.
Free, I, I, that's true. That was, I misspoke on that. That is the same price. There is no extra anything involved with having a larger trash cans, how I should have put that.
Right, right.
Good catch.
Yeah, ARPA funds are paying for these cans.
Right.
Yeah, that we approve.
For these cans.
All of this process is covered by.
Everything else.
Jeff, one other question, because I've seen it in other communities like down in Charleston or whatever. That picture, the next slide showed a gentleman actually, you know, helping to load that. It, it, is that gonna be required or like with that in Charleston, this truck comes by?
Yes, so the, so the state of the art in trash collection is robotic tippers that essentially the drivers in the cab with a joystick and a camera and it reaches out and it grabs. That is not, that's a.
That's not what we're getting.
That's a little bit of a, a big of a swing for us and quite frankly, uh, our topography in some of our streets will never support.
Okay.
Uh, something like that. So yes, this is something that, uh, the cart will be brought to the back, the, the loader will bring the cart to the back of the truck, put it on the tipper, pull the lever, it tips, comes back down and he puts it back.
So basically each truck goes from two on the back or?
Still have two on the back, still have two on the back.
They'll have two on the back.
Two tippers, so they can work both sides of the street. So, I mean, uh, this is just, this is just a smarter, easier, safer way to, uh, collect trash. And, and I don't want to be accused of, of burying the lead on this. Uh, it is also representing the first time we've ever actually put a limit on how much trash folks can, uh, put out. Now again, that limit, they can, they can choose what that limit is, but there will be a limit.
So, so what happens if somebody chooses the forty-eight gallon bin and it works for, uh, you know, thirty-five weeks out of the year and then all of a sudden they, they have a, an abundance, let's say Thanksgiving's coming or Christmas. I mean, they're gonna put some extra trash out. How's that gonna work?
So that's, that's a nice segue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first step in this is to set a solid waste policy that answers those what-if questions and not just that what-if question. Uh, but, uh, what about folks who may not have, uh, may not have room at the curb for one of these? Or may not have room in their house, or maybe there's two flights of stairs between their house and the curb. Or, and, and so we want to come up with a policy that is going to address all of those contingencies. Um, and provide the appropriate accommodations for every scenario that we can think of. And so part of why I'm up here is to let the public know that we'll be launching a survey next week. Uh, well, I want to hear every nightmare scenario that anybody can come up with. Because I will tell you, tens of thousands of refuse systems operate this way. So whatever scenario we've got, I'm confident someone, somewhere, someone has already sorted it out for us. All we have to do is figure out what's the best, what's the best solution for Stanton. We want to do that upfront. We want to put that in the policy. So when we get to the next phase, the information management phase, when we are putting that information out to the public and getting the information back from the public on what they would like, that they can make a, they can make a good decision with all the data in front of them, uh, for our residential customers, but also for our commercial customers. So right now our commercial customers get divided up into two big buckets, light and heavy, commercial. Um, and it's, you know, somewhat arbitrary where that division is and it's one cost for light, one cost for heavy. Makes it very difficult for them to make an appropriate business decision. Uh, whereas we, I mean, if we come out with a policy that makes it clear what city services cost, they can make a good apples to apples comparison with dumpsters and other decisions and decide what's best for them, what's best for their business. Uh, but we can only provide that information after we set a policy and pu- publish that policy out. So the data we get back in is decent data. Right? Cause I don't want someone to arbitrarily decide they want a small can and then realize, oh, I made a mistake wanting the big can. Because I, you know, there are some people who are gonna say, once or twice a year, I might need more. How can that, how will I be accommodated? Is that an accommodation I can live with? Should I get a larger can? All those questions get answered upfront. That starts with policy and that policy will be driven largely by the inputs we get on the survey. So, uh, let me run through the other steps. Implementation, uh, so as part of those ARPA funds will also be used to, will have a firm that does this for a living. They'll come in, register all of the cans. They all have a, a, a unique serial number registered to an address, delivered to that address. So that delivery, that registration will all be handled. Uh, they have told us for a system of our size, just under ten thousand customers, that's a one week evolution for them. And then we get into what we, in the enforcement, operating with it. And that would be staggered. Obviously, it's gonna, we're all gonna have a learning curve on this. But over time, with everyone given the same equipment, everyone operating on the same policy, we can do firm and fair enforcement to make sure that our city stays as trash-free, uh, as we want it to be. That our sanitation workers are operating as efficiently and safely as they can. Uh, one of the things that I'm most excited about is the refuse management software that will be installed. is the refuse management software that we'll be installing in the trucks. Because once we have a standardized cans, we know exactly how many cans are out there. We can really start to optimize our routes. We can start to, uh, push a lot of data into the cab of the truck on what's going on at individual, at individual stops. It's a lot of information that right now, when it's sort of an open ended equation, every time we roll out in the morning is how much trash is out there. It's hard to do. So there's opportunities here, uh, to just, just be better at how we do it. So this is, uh, Stanton Trash Talk, which we are probably inappropriately proud of that. But yes, so Stanton Trash Talk is going to be the website where you can get all your trash information. It's not a site to come drop your sick burns. It's actually a place to talk about trash. Uh, and so, uh, there'll be a lot of information there, uh, some FAQs. And then starting on Monday, there'll be a big old button you can click that will take you to the survey. And get all your thoughts and all your information.
Can I add to that?
Please do.
We will be mailing to every customer, a postcard that has the website and a QR code and a link to the survey. So everybody that has a account with the city will receive that postcard. And I'm not sure exactly when those will go out, but the survey is going to be open until December 15th. So we're going to get those postcards out as soon as possible. But spread the word, please, but everybody who has an account with the city should also receive a postcard.
Jeff, I'm sorry. Did you say this was going to be live on Monday?
I believe that was, that's still the.
Yeah, that's our, that's our hope.
Goal.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're finishing it up.
Okay.
Tomorrow and it may be towards the end of the day, but yeah, our goal is to get it out by Monday, make it live.
And that will run through.
December 15.
December 15.
Yeah.
So time for folks to, uh, talk amongst yourselves, uh, talk with your neighbors, uh, see what thought, what thoughts, thoughts and concerns you have. Again, I can't stand here today and tell you what that policy is going to look like. But I can tell you that, uh, that we are certainly dedicated to make sure that the policy provides accommodations for every scenario that is brought to our attention.
Ashi tray.
All right. So here's the schedule. Uh, again, starting, uh, on Monday, the survey and we'll start developing that policy. We want to have that policy in place in January. Because it's in January that we're going to start that data collection, that public outreach and the data collection coming back of what folks want so that we can place our order and have cans to roll out in July. Start of the fiscal year, just sees it's, it's a, it seems like a nice, clean time to make the change, to implement the new policy and to implement the new system. That is the schedule. It is ambitious. Uh, but eminently doable. And, uh, I think to some extent, there are going to be days where I'm going to need to keep my eyes on the prize and remember that at the end of this, it's all going to be worth it. It's going to be a lot of work between now and then. But like I said, uh, this is to some extent, to Councilor Robertson's point, sampling. A lot of folks have already moved on from what we're trying to do a couple of generations. Uh, so I said it, I said this at this podium about six months ago, I'll say it again. I'm going to drag this city kicking and screaming in the 1980s if it kills me. Uh, you know, this is, we're, we're playing a little catch up. But the good news is that means we got a lot of people's homework we can copy off of. So bring on your concerns, bring on, uh, your worries. Uh, and we will figure out how other folks are dealing with them and we'll pick the solution that works best for Stanton.
If I have one question, uh, a lot of people have really steep driveways. I can see one of these cans pulling somebody down the street if it's full. I mean, is there any way to, I mean, if you just let, let it set, well, I mean, lean it forward, it'll stop or is, you know?
They're very, they're very stable, but, but you know, but yes, so there are, there are. They, they are. And again, because each can is registered to an address, not to a customer. There's a particular address or a particular block or particular street that has issues, uh, that we can make some accommodations in how those cans are handled on that street. And then, and then log those into our refuse management system. So when the truck drives onto that block, the flag comes up in the, in the, in the cab that says, this is the block where the cans are over here. This is the block where the cans are facing a different direction. This is, and, uh, so when I say that we can provide accommodations for folks, not only can we provide those accommodations, we can record those accommodations in, in a, in a database that will notify the drivers as they approach an, an address with that accommodation, that that is, uh, that what's going on. Um, so, uh, you know, it's, it's a, a lot of different pieces sort of working together uh, that are all sort of instigated by the fact that we're going to the standardized, the standardized bins that sort of, uh, create a standardized level playing field upon which we can lay on all those special accommodations.
I think one thing that's worth repeating from earlier meetings is I believe about 45 tons a day are picked up and put into those trucks. They go across the scales at the dump, at the landfill. And currently all 45 tons a day are being lifted by hand by our sanitation workers out of the can into the hopper. And this is, uh, this is going to do wonders for our employees back.
Yes, I can tell you that, uh, the, our sanitation department racks up more workman's comp than the rest of Public Works combined. It's just that that is the nature of the beast.
Speaking of which, do we have a, uh, good news today?
Yeah. So, uh, we had an unfortunate incident with one of our sanitation crews earlier this week. I'm happy to say that A, uh, our, our worker's fine. He's got some bumps and bruises, but he'll be back to work tomorrow. Uh, none the worse for wear. And B, that PD was able to find the person, uh, uh, who hit him, uh, and they will be dealt with appropriately. So, uh, again, if I, if I'm allowed a quick editorial note from the podium, uh, please consider a refuse truck to be very similar to a school bus. If it's, if it's doing its business, you don't need to be passing it. I understand how inconvenient it is. I understand that it may, it may be a couple of minutes before, especially in some of our narrow streets, before you find an opportunity to get by them. But I'll tell you what, it may be inconvenient to wait behind a trash truck. It's also inconvenient to live in a city that's covered in trash. So, uh, we will, uh, appreciate everyone's cooperation.
And please understand that we are, you know, very, very sorry that this happened.
Absolutely.
Please tell your employee that we are wishing him a speedy recovery.
Thanks, sir. I will. All right. Any other questions for me? Members of council?
I can, can I just add something, Mayor?
Please.
You reminded me of something. You were talking about educational campaigns earlier about bike and ped. This will have a whole large component too. You talked about the amount of trash. One piece of this is educating folks, how can they produce less trash? So that will be a piece of this. And also what do you do with your old cans? We don't want them to end up at the landfill. So we will have, we'll be collecting ideas on that. We'll also provide people ideas for that. For instance, I've used them to make, for make planners. You can make them a compost bin. There's lots of different ideas out there. And even if you just Google it, you come up with a lot of cool things. So in loop, so we'll be, that'll be the part of the education piece as well as we move through this process. So, and we're looking for ideas on those as well. So when you fill out the survey, there's an area where you can fill out other and you can provide us ideas. You can also email us.
Right. I was going to say, if for every reason you feel like the survey is somehow not getting your message across, please contact me. Always happy to talk about this.
Thank you, Jeff.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
And Ms. Boragar, that, that leads us on to you. You, you were just getting started.
All right. I just have a few things to talk about. A lot of these are just awareness of some, um, it, some road blockages going on downtown. So anybody who travels downtown between October 23rd and October 27th, uh, one block of Augusta Street between, from Beverly to Frederick will be closed in both directions from 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM each day. And this is ordered to place a new roof on the old YMCA building. Um, detours will be in place, but southbound motorists are encouraged to use Lewis Street as an alternative. And northbound motorists can use culture in the same way. So we'll have something going out on social media about that. Um, also, and this is exciting, city council appropriated $480,000 in ARPA funds to pave the roadway and parking lots of Montgomery Hall Park. They need it desperately. That work will actually begin Monday, October 16th. They'll, the BNS contracting will start paving the parking lots first, which won't impede traffic flow. However, traffic will be impacted later that week as they pay from the soccer complex, pass the picnic shelters into the top of the park. That section of the roadway will be closed and then they'll work their way up the main road, up to the Irving Givens Administration Building and proceeding toward the exit. So the road near the administration building will be completed in two phases to eliminate traffic backups. Also something will go out about that as well, but please keep that in mind. We've gotten a lot of great press recently, um, on the tourism front, especially focused on the trains that are coming through town in the last few weeks. For instance, we've had press in travel and leisure, Southern Living, World Atlas, and on NBC 12. So that's all very exciting. Also, the city of Stanton receipt will benefit from a GO2 work in manufacturing and transportation in the valley grant in the amount of $884,000. This benefits region H, which is Stanton, Augusta and Waynesboro County. I'm sorry. Did I just say Waynesboro County, Stanton, Waynesboro and Augusta County? Sorry. Um, this will be for the Shenandoah Valley Center for Advanced Learning to increase the pool of qualified candidates in the transportation and logistics and light manufacturing industry clusters by adding new career, education and technical programs for industrial maintenance and aviation technology. This project will address critical needs to upgrade equipment to modern standards and technologies for training apprenticeship students in precision machining, welding auto and diesel technology. Finally, we are continuing to ask folks to voluntarily conserve your water usage. And while our current efforts are having the desired effect, we need to keep it going for a little bit longer. But we don't see any reason to have additional conservation actions put in place at this time. So we're moving in the right direction, but we just need to a little bit longer, have some voluntary restrictions. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question, the 808 ads to be shared amongst the three lookouts?
Yeah, it's the region, it's the regional. Correct.
And who's going to end up with that money? Is that going to Blue Ridge or?
Um, I just closed the, I just closed my sheet. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I think I said it in my comments. Hold on.
I didn't know who was going to administer. That's, that's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Shenandoah Valley Center for Advanced Learning. So.
That's good. That's good. That's excellent news. All right. That brings us to matters from the public. And, uh, this is a time set aside for, uh, council to hear from citizens about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form from Mr. Kessler. Please familiarize yourself with these rules before commenting. Please come to the podium and begin your call, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. Would anyone like to speak tonight under Matters from the Public?
Oh, my.
Oh, tell me this didn't happen.
Hit that gal.
Callie, do we have anybody online?
No, sir. No one with their hands raised.
I don't believe this has ever happened. Are you sure?
Hit the thing.
All right, knock wood.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.